Either now or later, I think it'd be appropriate. But as one of the improvements that Finance Director Van Gompo and his staff have made have been to get us qualified for a GFOA, Governmental Finance Officers Association, certification for our budget is to have certain schedules and certain numbers. And we haven't had this number together, but I put it up there. Our operating funds, our total budget, is roughly $140 million. So that just gives you an idea of the scope and breadth of the services we provide. And that doesn't include the capital improvement program, which is about 60, over 60 million. So our budget capital operating for 2021 is over $200 million. So this is not a small time operation, and I think we're blessed by professional staff that helped manage this budget for the council and give you the confidence that we're doing everything we can. The general fund is usually what we talk about the most because that's where tax dollars, property tax dollars go to. And that budget is 48.76 million. It's an increase of just under 2% over the 2020 budget. And Mr. Van Gompo will get into expenditure restraint and how we are for that. So you get a feel for that. We're under expenditure restraint, and there are things we'll do later on to make sure that we continue to comply. The tax levy is proposed at 90, or excuse me, 41.95 million, which is an increase of 2.98%. The council, when we had the budget workshops, there was discussion about the three and four, between the three, but not to exceed four. I don't think I heard any single council member say anything about a comfort zone over 4%. Mr. Van Gompo looked at it and said, "We're going to shoot for three and stay under three," and we've done that. The tax rate is proposed at 11.1223. That's an increase of just slightly under 22 cents. I wouldn't worry so much about the rate, even though a lot of people worry about that, because there is a growing disparity. You know, Luke's here this morning, Luke Alger, our assessor. You know, we're getting a disparity between market value and assessed value. So that rate, as that difference grows between assessed and equalized, the rate does tend to go up a little higher, but it's less than a 3% increase in the levy, and that's really the main focus. I'm not going to get into a ton of the expenditure increases because each department can talk about that. The budget message referenced it. The only two that I'm going to point out are the unclassified contingency. And the reason I point that one out is because, number one, it's the largest of the five categories that we talked about. It's over a million dollars. But most of that is due to yet-to-be-determined wage increases. We haven't plugged them in for the, any type of across-the-board increases. Those are not in the operating budgets. So any increases you see there don't have that built in. We have it in the unclassified account until negotiations are done and things like that. Similarly, we have contingency funds for the continuing pandemic. We have to be prepared for anything that comes up there. And then, because we're at the 1.97% increase, expenditure restraint allows us to go as high as 2.52. So we have a contingency in there in order to plug that, to get ourselves up to the cap without exceeding the cap, so we still qualify. Similarly, this also gives council some flexibility. Over the course of the next two days, you're going to hear requests from different departments, and we want you to have the flexibility that you can do things. With that said, always remember that, you know, we have some capacity and expenditure restraint, to be sure, but at the same time, if any of these enhancements involve additional revenues, we're not going to be able to create the revenues unless the department is proposing something. So that'll directly go to taxes. And I think that was another reason Mr. Van Gompo tried to keep that number below 3% because, to the degree you want to entertain any of the proposals for enhancements, that gives you the capability of, you've got some room with the property tax levy if you choose to. If you choose to stay under 3%, we'll make appropriate adjustments to still maximize our allowance under expenditure restraint without adding anything to individual operating budgets. The other expenditure that I want to point out is insurance. The council's already approved our health insurance for 2021. The increase from year to year within the general fund is only about $222,000. And as I referenced, when the council approved the expenditure, we are preparing for 2022. That is when we fully expect that the state is going to take some hits with revenues, and we have to be ready for that. And to get some expenditures down for 2022, we have to start preparing ourselves. So I anticipate that we'll make some changes to our health plan for 2022 because we're going to need every rabbit we can pull out of our hat. Because I expect, you know, I fully expect that we'll get a 5 or more percent reduction in state aid. I hope I'm wrong, but if that's a 5% cut in state aid, is well over a half million dollars. So that's something we have to brace ourselves for. So things like preparing for future reductions is what we need to do. The other part of insurance, workers' compensation. We've had a couple of rough years. Yeah, I don't want to cite any individual because that's inappropriate. It's not fair to that person. But some of you are aware of some high-profile issues with some of our employees, and our workers' compensation is self-funded, which means we pay for any expenditure under a half million dollars. Anything over a half million, we have other insurance to cover the higher amounts. But when we get a lot of under $500,000, that starts to cut into our fund balance. We need to restore that fund balance. So we're looking at $164,000 increase in workers' comp alone. And then, of course, because of our cyber attack, our insurance has gone up for our cyber liability insurance. Mr. Newman can talk about that. The strategic plan still is being followed. One of the things that I referenced in there is the fact that we have our new strategic plan that takes effect January 1. A lot of similarities in terms of our primary goals, but we also added the addition of inclusiveness into our guiding principles. What I fail to do after I reference that is I fail to provide any documentation that it's in the budget. And I want to assure you that we have support for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee in there, and we also have some funds for 2020 that will likely be coming back to council to carry over. I don't think the committee is prepared yet to expend those funds yet, and I don't want to rush them. They seem to be very diligent and just thoughtful into what they're doing. So we have funds available should they have any needs that they would like to request of the council. So I think we're going to be okay there. With respect to the strategic plan, continued investment in our infrastructure, out of that $62 million that I cited in the CIP, about $17.3 million, or over 30%, is for improvements to street and underground utilities. We still have utilities that date back to the 1800s. So I think we're a little bit ready for those. I don't think those utilities owe us anything anymore, and it's time to get those done as we've been working on those over the last decade or so. We also have some needs for facilities. The council had looked at the capital improvement program. The capital budget starts on page 373. That reflects the direction that council gave. When they looked at this five-year plan, they said, "We need to get borrowing down." So we knocked it down from $15.5 million to $14.6 million. And what that, we're doing that by stretching out how some expenditures are proposed in the CIP, specifically facilities. The Parks Building is now proposed over a three-year period. That bumps a lot of other things back one year, including the fire training facility. So those are reflected, starting on page 373. And when we get to the different departments, the departments can talk about that, and Mr. Van Gompo can get into the financing end of things. With that said, when we balanced it for 2021, a lot of things got pushed off to 2022. Right now, we have projected borrowing in 2022 of over 25 million. We all know that that's unacceptable. Just recognize it. We've got to make some decisions over the next year because those things have to get pushed back, and that's just a reality, and we know that. But I just want, if you're looking at the borrowing for future years, that's something we got to address. So that's pretty much the highlights of how the budget relates to the strategic plan. I already mentioned the levy. One of the things with the levy of 2.98%, there's actually some good news in there. The levy for debt service has been the primary culprit in our increase in the levy over the last few years. When the council was approving a 4% levy increase, a lot of that was debt service. I am very happy to report, and Russ can get into a little more, but our levy for debt service is proposed to go down by over $900,000. We've done a lot of switching from long-term to shorter-term debt, and for the last few years, we've been paying that greater amount of principal as a result of that. Now we're getting some positive impact from that. So I think we've turned the corner a little bit with that, and Russ can talk about that when we get into debt service.
Well, Mark, let me just jump in real quick. So council, if you're following along on the levy, Mark's referring to page 2 of your budget document, and it illustrates that most of the levy increase is going to the general fund. There's an increase for garbage collection. All of the other special revenue funds, funds that are supported by levy, we've been able to hold the line. And then Mark just talked about the decrease for debt service. So it's kind of color-coded. You can see where each of the individual funds are, and most of them were holding the line, except for some of the things he talked about in the general fund.
So it's really beneficial that our debt service, the timing for our debt service to go down was really good because I was going to give Russ, thank you, Russ, because I wasn't going to go into that level of detail. But all the other operating funds, with those two exceptions, are no increase. And we kept that in mind, and the departments were aware of that. The big culprit, and it's not something that you have direct impact, direct influence over, but revenues other than property taxes are really not, they're going down. And that's a big problem that we have. I think I have it, general fund revenues other than property taxes are decreasing by 3.6% over 2020. That's intergovernmental revenues. That's a major challenge. Intergovernmental revenues themselves are going down nearly a quarter of a million dollars. Now, that doesn't seem like a lot. It's only 1.4%. But when intergovernmental revenues are your second-largest revenue source, the only way you make up for that is you end up increasing property taxes. And, you know, it's, the state needs to recognize that the decisions they make are having a directed impact on property taxes. Shared revenues going down 0.84%. Again, not a big decrease, but it's still going down. And how do you make up for that? We have an operating increase overall. In our general fund, increase is over 900,000. Our operating levy is going up 1.9 million. There's no increase in those other areas. General transportation aids is the biggest culprit for the decrease, $229,000, 6.7%. It's all formula-based. It's not that there's been major cuts. I'm sure gas tax proceeds have something to do with that, but it's still a problem. The municipal services program, I shared with you a couple of weeks ago. I believe Councilor Allison Osby walked into a question right at the perfect time. The municipal services program, that's the one that I've been talking to council about for years, and we're now getting less than 35 cents on the dollar. That program is unchanged for 2020, or excuse me, yeah, 2021. But again, the percentage of reimbursement continues to plummet. The League of Municipalities has it in there to talk about for their legislative program, but my cynicism is that the state's largely going to ignore that, but they need to. And the expenditure restraint, tiny, tiny increase. Again, that program has remained frozen, all of these programs, with the exception of general transportation aids, has pretty much been frozen or reduced for 20 years. That's the culprit with property tax increases. If the state had only fulfilled their obligations, we could see minimal to no increase in property taxes if the state would just fulfill their obligation. It's called shared revenue. I haven't seen the sharing, and I've been working in Wisconsin for 28 years. Russ has been here for 30 years. There hasn't been a heck of a lot of sharing, except when times are bad. And we've shared the pain, but we've rarely shared the benefit. I see Mike smiling, so that must be something he had in one of his lectures in government finance or something. The only fund that has been directly impacted by COVID has really been the Convention Center Fund. Rather than get into a ton of detail, I'm going to let Russ, when we get to that, talk about it. But we're going to have, we're going to, we were ready to set a record. In February, we were like, "Oh, my gosh, the room tax fund is doing great." And then COVID hit. We were expecting over $1,008, maybe even $1,009. We'll be lucky to get $700,000 out of that fund this year. That's going to have repercussions. The CVB is already doing what they can because we can only give them the 60% that they're due, but it's not 60% of 1.8 million. It's 60% of less than $700,000. And our reps on the CVB know exactly what I'm talking about. For us, that also means the debt service obligations that 20% of our fund goes to, that obligation doesn't go away. And our operating costs for the Convention Center, our obligations remain there as well. Even though it's not as busy at the Convention Center, we still have things to do to maintain. I'll let Russ and John Urban get into that when we get there. And then finally, fund balance. We're doing very well with the policy the council's adopted. Once we get over 30%, that's our cap. We used to just have a floor of 16%. Now we have a floor and a cap. When the budget goes up, the cap goes up, or the cap for fund balance goes up. So that's why there's a slight decrease. We're nearly at the cap. For 2020, we're at 29.8%, and we're projecting to be 29.5%. With that said, we still have a, we have a very good fund balance. We should be very proud of that. Some other ideas that, you know, we're going to be kicking around, there's an enhancement for tuition reimbursement. I think we need to look at tuition reimbursement, not just within the fire department. The fire department is going to be making a very good case, but this has to do with succession planning across the organization and getting our already good staff better trained and prepared to succeed everybody, from me on down. We have some great people that, with some good training, I think we can make some impact. Maybe reserving some fund balance for a sinking fund for that, or a workers' comp fund. I mentioned workers' comp is a challenge. So those are, we need to look at creative things. I would not recommend using the fund balance to do a one-time reduction in property taxes. I think some of the ideas, reducing debt is a very good way because you reduce debt, you reduce future tax increases. So you're kind of, it's a gift that'll keep on giving when you do something like that. So I would look at the last page in fund balance about that. That's really all I have. Russ, do you have anything you want to add?
Just a couple of quick things to help you find information. Mark talked about a lot of the high-level viewpoints. I directed you to page 2 for the levy. I just want to walk through the executive summary section real quick. It won't take a lot of time, but we include a graph that shows the allocation of the levy. This is from illustration purposes. That was on page 3. Page 4, we show you how much of the levy is going to each of the various funds. It's kind of a column graph for that. Mark talked about the rate and valuation. It's important to note that the valuation is still an estimate. Probably mid-November, we'll get the final number, so that could change. So on page 5 is this linear graph showing the history of valuation, both assessed and equalized. On page 6 is a column graph. And then the city manager talked about the sources of all funds, which is on page 7. On page 8 is the uses of all funds. So you have that information. And then he talked about the general fund, and that is on page 9, with a graph on page So that's there as well. And then from a big picture, general fund is probably about 80% of our conversation will be departments within the general fund, but we have other funds. And then right before the general fund, right after the general fund tab on page 11, just kind of a big overall picture showing that we do have a recommended balanced budget with revenue and expenditures at $48,765,800. So it just kind of puts into play our revenue estimates for the current year and what's being recommended for the budget. And on page 12 is just a listing of the general fund revenues. So with that, I think we're ready to go into the department activities unless people Okay, hearing none. Alan, I guess you're up.
Good morning, everybody. Here's Alan Davis, Community Development. I have four divisions that we're going to be talking about this morning. With Planning Services with Mark Lyons, then we'll go to the Assessor with Luke Alger, and then Inspection Services with John Zarotti. And then, last but not least, Kelly Niforth in Economic Development. And when we get to the CDBG, we'll get Darlene Brandt on the line. So that, there's no specific new programs or services we're proposing with the 2022 draft budget for any of the divisions, but there's a lot of details to go over with what we're doing now and maybe some refinements to the programs to match the strategic plan. But I think I'll let the individual division directors talk about that. When it comes to Planning Services, that's Mark Lyons, and I think he's still on the phone or on the line. He's had a rough couple of days, so hopefully his voice holds out. Mark Lyons, are you there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Let's see. Maybe I'll talk as much as I can, and maybe Mark will correct me on this one since he sounds terrible still. If you recall, Planning Division, they do the day-to-day Plan Commission work. They have a lot of boards and commissions that they provide services to, from sustainability to bike and ped to all the neighborhood programs. They're tied to the strategic plan with one of the five main goals with strengthening neighborhoods, and we spend a lot of time on those types of projects. In many ways, we're implementing the strategic plan on a daily basis with site plan review for current planning. We're also working on the neighborhood projects on a daily basis. Went through the Great Neighborhood CIP program, and we're going to be reviewing those 2020 projects and bringing those at council in the near future. Some of his accomplishments from 2020, I included the...
I'm sorry, Alan. This is Amira here. Could you reference the page of Planning Services and each of the references as you go along? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for pointing that out. I'm starting on page 118. You're welcome. Thank you for pointing that out. Planning Services, we start at 118, but they also have the bid and the historic markers and the Healthy Neighborhoods program. So I'll point out those page numbers when we get to those. Let's see. The continued, the 2020 accomplishments. We're implementing the Sawdust District Master Plan. If you recall, we adopted that at the end of 2019. We've acquired and demolished the last few structures, at least for a couple of blocks in the Sawdust District, and we're continuing to work on the expansion project, I'm sorry, Main Street Right-of-Way Project that includes the narrowing for four lanes, the two lanes and the parking on Main Street. Couple of cool projects that we worked on was the Neighborhood Quality of Life Analysis Map Tool. That's an update that we do annually for the mapping for the city to show where our spots are for neighborhood quality. And the 2020 Mini Mural Project that you'll see around downtown area. And we also updated the Sustainability Plan. Unfortunately, I can hear a lot of feedback every once in a while. Is everybody hearing me okay?
I think that's room 406. Jenny and Russ is not muted.
Yes. If you guys could mute over there in 406, that'd be great.
Thank you. Let's see. Working Neighborhoods, the 2021 goal, if you recall, we're working on a six neighborhood plan, and that is the Jackson Street Corridor Study, which we're almost done with, and you'll be hearing that at the end of October here at a workshop, virtual workshop. And we're also looking at our, updating our residential design standards for single-family, two-family homes. We're also working on the Winnebago Air Zone Update. Winnebago County and the City of Oshkosh basically share an airport overlay zoning code, and we're attempting to update that based on the latest thinking for safe airport operations. And that would potentially give the parts of the city more opportunities for development or redevelopment. And lastly, we want to update our subdivision code. That's the part of the code that allows us to, or allows developers to split lots into new parcels to be developed, and we've got several of those subdivisions in the works. And we also have several elements of the subdivision code to review with Plan Commission and Council so that we can make it as attractive for the development as possible and increase that single-family development because that is one of the strategic plan goals as well. Couple of highlights regarding our key performance indicators. Neighborhood volunteer hours is one of those KPIs, and that is, we work with Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods to track that. It increased probably artificially in 2018 with the number of volunteer hours. 2019 is more an accurate figure. Unfortunately, they were counting some of the attendees in 2018, we discovered. So we're only counting volunteer hours for people who are actually working on the project, not being entertained at the event or the programs. And I think GOHNI is still continuing to track all those hours. 2020 is probably going to be down as well since we're not having nearly as many neighborhood in-person events. I think they've been very engaged when it comes to virtual events, and we continue to operate that way with Healthy Neighborhood Alliance and all the neighborhood meetings that we attend as staff. And we've got a couple of other things to talk about for planning. On page 119, you can see we still track the neighborhood space improvements. That'd be the Great Neighborhoods Program, and we were successful in identifying projects that could strengthen neighborhoods throughout the city. The one project that's probably not showing up right now is the River East Neighborhood has been selected for the Rock the Block 2021. If you recall, we did Sacred Heart in 2019 and Congress Field in 2020. River East will be the 2021 Rock the Block, and that happens to be where the William Waters Plaza project is located, and we're hoping to coordinate the completion of that William Waters project with the gazebo and artwork around the same time as the Rock the Block 2021 in River East. So I just wanted to highlight... Uh, so I just wanted to highlight that particular piece, uh, of what's going on with the Planning Division. Are there any questions on what I've talked about up to this point or did I miss anything, Mr. Lyons?
No, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I do need to leave in about five minutes to get to a doctor's appointment.
Okay.
Um, Alan, just a question here. Um, with regard to the GOHNI and, um, I think we're seeing a lot of reduction in volunteerism across, um, many areas. Uh, not just unique to our city, of course. Um, but I guess my question is, uh, besides Rock the Block, and it's my understanding that, you know, much of that is volunteer-driven. Of course Habitat and Rebuilding Together, working in conjunction with GOHNI. Um, you know, is there an update yet on the One Oshkosh, uh, strategic plan?
Oh, very good question. Uh, staff has been working on that update with all our partners. Uh, my expectation is we'll have a draft of that, uh, One Oshkosh update by the end of this year. Uh, that's been the goal from the beginning. So I know we've met with all the partners from the Housing Authority, Advocap, uh, Habitat and GOHNI. Uh, and I think we've all kind of, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lyons, but I think we've all basically agreed to what we think we can do over the next three-year period when it comes to neighborhood, uh, preservation or revitalization.
Correct. Yeah, we met with all the service partners, uh, to go over kind of the metrics of what each one of them do. Um, and staff is now just putting the, the draft proposal together based on the information we gathered from them. And we should be able to get out that draft relatively soon.
And then, uh, I believe there is some reference to kind of focusing in on neighborhoods in need with regards to, you know, equitable allocation. Is that part of that update to the strategic plan?
Yes, I think you've al- already seen a little bit of that when we, uh, kind of updated the scoring for the Great Neighborhoods Program in that, uh, we want to make sure that all the neighborhoods, uh, have a equal opportunity, uh, for acquiring those funds for projects. And we're also using that when it comes to the, one of our other, uh, pages, uh, the Healthy Neighborhoods Investment Program. Uh, so I would say yes, we're trying to, uh, use the Quality of Life, Life Map because that doesn't cover, uh, the neighborhood associations don't cover all of our, say, most needy, uh, blocks or neighborhoods.
Thank you.
And if you'd like, we could skip to page 208. That would be the Healthy Neighborhood, uh, Initiative. That's where we fund quite a few of the projects that, uh, and programs that we created over the last few years. That's on page 208. And this is the program where it's largely loan programs. We do have a few grant programs for the, uh, purchasing, uh, houses and some, uh, curb appeal type of projects that we've worked with, with GOHNI and the, uh, foundation to leverage. Uh, the one area that we haven't been able to make, uh, get any traction on so far has been the new homes in your neighborhood. Uh, we might have to increase the dollar grant to, uh, attract more, uh, interest in that program. We have the lots available. People have contacted us about that, but we haven't gotten any new homes built on those vacant lots that the RDA owns. The rest of the programs, like the Code Enforcement, uh, the Owner, uh, Rehab's, the Rental Rehab's, uh, they've had good, uh, success. And probably the, the best is the, uh, program about, uh, the down payment assistance. Uh, that's really, uh, been a, an attractive program. Uh, some of the other things that we're working on still is the Historic Preservation Programs. And we continue to work with our Habitat for Humanity and GOHNI on the Rock the Block Programs to help, uh, identify projects that can use these funds. Uh, and, and, uh, enhance those neighborhoods, uh, as part of Rock the Block. The one thing that we talked about a month or two ago was the Affordable Housing. And the Affordable Housing Program, I think we just sent out that RFP, RFQ in the last week or two. So we're expecting to get those answers back here in November and be able to report to council the beginning of that project here in December, January timeframe. As you can see, we were under budget because some of the programs didn't get off the ground as much as we wanted this year because of COVID. Uh, so we still have ample funds to, uh, pay for that affordable housing, uh, study.
Alan, another, I guess this might be a little more detailed, but, um, it wasn't clear in the presentation, um, that was given by GOHNI what their level of involvement is with the Rock the Block. Are you able to, um, address that?
Uh, I I, I came in from probably a 30,000-foot level in that GOHNI and Habitat have a, basically a services agreement. And, uh, GOHNI, uh, does the community door knocking and organizing to identify potential projects. Uh, and then they, uh, identify, uh, who can work, what, uh, volunteer positions, uh, is my understanding. And they recruit some, certainly not all. Uh, Habitat recruits a lot of those, uh, volunteers, but GOHNI recruits volunteers as well. And then, uh, coordinates the activities with the city more so than Habitat. Uh, so Habitat and GOHNI, I, I know Habitat's the lead, but, uh, GOHNI does a lot of the footwork, the groundwork to get the projects lined up in the neighborhoods behind the project. If you'd like more details on that, I'd have to ask you to follow up, I'll follow up with Pam Ruder. Uh, one thing we also do, just to, uh, highlight that, we do pay for a little bit of Ann Schaefer's time out of, uh, uh, parks because she's an excellent fundraiser and a lot of the neighborhood projects uh, depend on donations and fundraising and Ann's been very successful in helping that. And that's another area that GOHNI and the city have been working on is that, uh, connecting with technology for, uh, senior citizens. And that's just another activity that GOHNI has been engaging in over the last, last year. So just wanted to highlight that as a, another way of social engagement in these times.
I'd also like to point that out as a, as an example of intergovernmental or interdepartmental cooperation. You know, you wouldn't think of Parks and Community Development, but, uh, Ann works for both, uh, departments and, and does so very well. And, uh, there's been a good degree of success with that, uh, with that interdepartmental cooperation.
And then there's just two other, uh, funds that Planning Services are responsible for, which, uh, the Bid, the Business Improvement District, uh, which they're working on their budget, uh, right now. So we haven't plugged in all that much right now, uh, for the bid other than last year's, uh, budget. And then we have Historical Marker Fund, uh, that, uh, charitable people have made donations to in the past and we use that to, uh, put the plaques and the, uh, markers out for historic properties around the city. Uh, so we track that and, uh, that's with the Landmarks Commission. And if there's no other questions, I'll let Mr. Lyons take off for his doctor's appointment. And hopefully Mr. Alger is still on the line and we can talk at a bigger picture as to where the property values are in the City of Oshkosh because that is a driving factor when it comes to a lot of our, uh, discussion here. Uh, Assessor is on page 111. 111. And I see Mr. Alger is logged in.
Yep, I'm here now.
Thank you. Uh, Luke Alger is our, uh, City Assessor. He has a staff that works, uh, daily, uh, largely with the residential properties. Uh, we contract with Tyler Technologies for commercial appraisals and open book and board of review. Uh, but the bulk of the work from personal property to residential and making sure all the statements are right is actually on Luke's responsibility. And, uh, maybe I'll, since Luke's voice is okay, I'll let him talk about his, uh, strategic plan goals and accomplishments in 2021 and some of the news we have regarding values and assessments that we have here in the city.
All right. Uh, well, our strategic, uh, strategic plan goals are basically just to maintain equity and appraising all classes of property in the city. Make sure responding to citizens timely, informative, and, uh, make sure that, uh, we're working with other departments. And we work with, uh, Economic Development and some other departments to help them if they need to or have requests about valuation. Um, our 2020 accomplishments were, uh, that we made sure that we did the maintenance reviews that we have on, on our uh, goals for residential, commercial to make sure that we're continuing to update our records. Um, that'll help us when we do do another citywide revaluation. It also keeps our information current for the public and for our own internal uses. Um, and then as far as, uh, we, the residential, commercial billing permits, to make sure we filled in all those and accounted for the value. That would contribute to the existing assessments. And then we did the sale reviews required by the state. Um, we're asked to make sure that we're reviewing sales. So now we have an accurate idea of what valuation is, but also we know what our, um, assessment to sale ratio is, um, every year. Then we need to submit reports to Department Revenue, make sure those are in, uh, on a timely manner, that they're accurate. And, uh, this year we, uh, changed our assessment notices. They were an older version of the assessment notices and they need to be brought up to the current, uh, form that, uh, um, state has been using. Uh, we use those to communicate to the, uh, public any changes that we made. Uh, that went really well. Um, then we also had to update our assessment role. Um, we've been using one for our prior, um, software. We'll update to, um, NIMIS, uh, for tax. We also had to change the, the role that we were using. So we were able to do that. It turned out well as well. And our 2021 goals are basically to continue to do the things that we, we do regularly. I just, um, making sure that we're continuing to build the properties to keep our records up to date. Um, those maintenance reviews I mentioned, being to do the permits, the sales and, uh, get our reports in. We're hoping our open book and board review and like that.
And Mr. Alger has a couple of key performance indicators I think are worth talking a little more about. Uh, number one is on the top, top of page 112. That would be the, uh, assess values. And you can see the total keeps going up, which is great for the city. Uh, the next set of columns is residential and commercial. Those are the two classes that the city, uh, assesses. Uh, you can see they've gone up over the last four or five years. Manufacturing is actually assessed by the Department of Revenue. And unfortunately that, uh, has been declining. And then there's the, uh, I, I just point to the last set of columns. That's personal property. And that's where we've had just a lot of changes in the last three or four years that have, uh, removed a lot of personal property from our tax rule. Maybe Mr. Alger could explain a little bit about the manufacturing side and personal property side.
Um, the manufacturing side, and I, some of that is, uh, you know, some erosion in value in manufacturing that occurred over the, you know, prior years. Uh, some of that is also the manufacturing is valued by the state at full value. And then it's reduced to our level of assessment. So since we don't revalue the properties to full value every year, um, slowly have our values be, uh, percentage of full value, which is what the ratio is. Um, so I think last year we had about 92% of full value. So each year you're seeing manufacturing also decrease as you apply the ratio, um, from what? So rather than having their value stay at the level that we were at in 2017 when we did our fully reevaluation, um, they value on that full value and then reduce it to that percentage of value. Um, that where the city is at. And I think, uh, Russ has supplied our, um, history of our level of assessment in some of those front pages that he introduced. And one of the first 10 pages or so, I think that's in there. Um, as far as the personal property, I think some of you are aware that, uh, there's a regular erosion of personal property over time as, uh, different assets that had previously been taxable have been removed and, uh, making them exempt. Um, and as that happened, the last one that we had that was pretty large was in 2017. Um, the statute that was put in place reimbursed, uh, communities for a certain portion of the, um, amount that was exempted. And that was on one schedule, um, personal properties reported, the assets are reported on different schedules depending on the type of asset. And they exempted, um, basically machinery, tools and patterns, which a lot of that's machinery. And by exempting that, uh, the way that the law was worded, exempted machines in general. And machines were reported on other schedules other than the one that they were reimbursing on. And the reason I'm spending time in that detail is because, uh, our reimbursement is based on what was reported in 2017. That was about 18.7 million dollars. So we were reimbursed for that, but the result of the exemption for the pieces and assets that were outside of the schedule that they used to establish that 18.7 million, uh, was 31.4 million. So that extra 12.7 million is left out there to never be reimbursed unless there was a statutory change. So that's a pretty significant amount. So that was the original, that's what we saw in 2018. But because of the way that the statute was worded and machinery was worded and was very open-ended and broad in order for us to apply it fairly according to the statute, um, there was more assets that companies were figuring out that the law exempted. And so they were following the law and making sure that they reported it accurately um, as they understood it. And that caused another 13.6 million to be, um, exempted in 2019. So, you know, 12.7 million, 13.6 million, you know, is a pretty significant amount. Now we're up to 26 million dollars that we just won't ever see again. We won't be reimbursed for.
And I'll just add some color commentary to Luke's, uh, you know, factual play-by-play. Luke gives this to you as objectively as he can, but I think the color commentary that, that goes here and it's in, it's a little bit in my budget message, but this, what happens, if council had a 0% change in the levy, regular residential property taxpayers would see an increase in their tax bill because this is resulting in a shift from non-residential to residential. That's the effective change that's, that shifting is happening. Um, and the, when we don't get reimbursed, as Luke talks about, that means that we're going to make up that revenue somewhere else. So again, even though this isn't, uh, there is a little bit of intergovernmental revenue because we're supposed to, we're supposed to get reimbursed as Luke referenced, but we're not getting reimbursed fully. And again, it's, it's, uh, the state blaming us for property tax problems when they're causing it. And like I said, if you did zero change in the property tax levy, residences would see an increase. Uh, Russ or Luke, uh, do you want to comment on that?
I think, uh, you covered it fairly well. It's just, again, the levy is divided by the total valuation the community come up with the tax rate. And if the valuation's not, uh, keeping pace, then it causes the rate to go up.
So, I mean, the other piece of this that, uh, we didn't quite get to is it, the possible erosion on the personal property side hasn't completely, um, ended. There's a potential hanging out there and it's very likely that this is going to go into the manufacturing personal property because they've been challenged across the state on manufacturing personal property for this machinery exemption. Trying to, businesses trying to figure out, well, okay, if the statute says that manufacturing tools and patterns are exempted, we feel that we have the same assets that should be also exempted. And so they've challenged this in court and that's still working its way through court. So we have to see where that lands. Um, some of the initial rulings look like it could be some type of a hybrid where some stuff is still taxed, but not everything that previously was taxed will be. So we could see additional erosion on the manufacturing personal property side for the machinery tool and pattern. Uh, and there's nothing out there that provides for reimbursement for those assets in that original, uh, law that was put in place. So we don't know where that'll land, but that's something, and we can't quantify it at this point. So it's just a heads up. So we don't know where that'll land, but that's something, and we can't quantify it at this point. So it's just a heads up that this could be coming.
Hey Luke, um, do you want to just talk about the overall, um, ratio of assessed to equalize and uh, what being, uh, below 90% means and what we could be looking at in the future?
Sure. Um, so the state basically uses the ratio to determine whether, um, we should do a revaluation at a minimum. Obviously you can do a revaluation every year. That's something that your community supports to maintain a hundred percent. But at a minimum, if you fall below 90%, uh, your assessments to sale prices in a year, that starts the clock ticking in terms of when you have to do a revaluation. And, uh, they give you, um, four years initially, and then they give you two buffer years. So essentially you have a six-year window to do a revaluation after you fall below, um, 90%. So we, for 2020 are at 89%. So, and it starts ticking in the year. So they're counting year one in 2020. So we now need to be thinking about when we are going to do, fund our next revaluation so that we can make sure that we're following the state statutes.
Our last revaluation was 2016, 17? Is that correct, Mr. Alger?
That is correct.
Yeah. And back then we did it because even though we weren't necessarily below the 90% threshold, the, the mix was, it was just a different situation. Because within property classifications, it was a little different. Uh, before 2008, you could almost count on doing a revale every seven years. Take about three, four years for you to, uh, get yourself below 90% and then would start the clock as, as Luke referenced. We're kind of getting normalized a little bit and I think the clock just started, uh, or the clock will have started, uh, with this year. So, that's going to have a budget impact because the last time we did it back in 2017, I'll either ask Mr. Davis or Mr. Alger, about 250,000, is that a good number to, to estimate for what the cost of a, a revaluation will be?
Yes.
So just be prepared that that's going to have an impact on our operating budget, uh, within the next few years because that won't be, we did it in 16 because it was the right thing to do, it was the correct thing to do. Now it's the mandated thing to do. So just be prepared for that when we get into the 22 or 23 budget. I prefer it to be the 23, but Luke may say, Mark, it's gotta be 22 or we gotta get started. Uh, a little bit in 22. So, um, but we're going to be, we need to be prepared for that. And I'm not thrilled about adding things to the budget in 22, Luke. But recognize council that, you know, Luke's just delivering the bad news. I can't, you know, it, you can't shoot the messenger.
I'd say for Luke, um, regarding the, uh, commercial, uh, assessed values then, um, can, it looks like there's just a very, very slight increase in that. And that's in spite of the reduced assessments from some of the, uh, uh, I guess the dark store hangover, if you will. Uh, could you speak to that?
Um, I think most of the increase you're seeing is new construction is what we're having is the development that's going on, which has been pretty substantial for the several years now. I think, uh, commercials saw for 2020, um, locally, uh, 30, well, 30 million in increase, which is pretty good. Prior to years, we're 23 and 24 million, just to give us some of my context. So yeah, we're still seeing the development has been helping us in residential and commercial. I think this year we're going to see some manufacturing increase as well. We don't have those numbers yet. The state doesn't report them, but looking at the preliminary numbers, they, they look like we're going to get some of that. So always the new construction can offset some of those other issues. But it's hard to predict new construction.
I guess, uh, the, the question is how much, uh, more would that, might that have been were it not for the reduced, um, assessments? Do we have like a general number of, of what we saw for reduced assessments from some of the big bucks?
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't have the numbers, uh, for what we actually reduced them, the actual hard numbers. Um, I can look those up and get those for you if you'd like. Um, I think we've had them out there. You could prove them in the past. But as far as like bringing them together and quantifying them, I can do that.
The reason it's, the reason it's a good question, uh, you know, it doesn't have, it's not directly, yeah, it's sort of like what have you foregone and some of the arguments that, uh, that some people who, who don't believe in the dark store, uh, problem, which, you know, we're not one of those, we're not that group of people, but uh, the challenge is that it's sort of ignoring that the problem exists or, well, really didn't have an impact. So quantifying it is a little bit of conjecture. Um, it's sort of a, uh, an estimation rather than an actual number, Madam Mayor, but it's still a legitimate question to ask and a legitimate question to talk about because people will dismiss it if you don't ask that question and you don't answer it. So Luke can get you that general information, but, uh, it's sort of like what I said with, uh, with some of the state aid. Would, what would our tax rate be if we got the state aid we had? I can't tell you exactly, but I can tell you that it, it would have a definite benefit to us. But it's one of those things that you'll never know about and some people don't want to believe it, but it still needs to be answered.
But don't we have, um, hard numbers for the amount that's been requested, uh, for reduction? I mean, obviously we had some settlements.
It's still all estimation because what would it be today? If the Walgreens case hadn't gone the way it did back in 2014 or whatever it was, where would, where would that value be today? There's some, I mean, we can give you some estimates. It's just that it's still a little bit of projection because we aren't able to, uh, value it that way anymore because that's what the law states. So we're kind of, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Yeah. And I think that's what I was thinking as well in terms of, for example, a CVS, you know, is in the same business as Walgreens and the impact of Walgreens is also in CVS. So, uh, there's no quantifiable number there for that. The reduced value in our opinion, they're, they're undervalued. Um, but that's how we've been told to value them. So it's just, it's an opinion based on what, how they should be valued in. But CVS is, uh, an, a law, an example of a property that had to be put in line with another property that's similar to it. So you lose that value, you never gained it. So it's not there to report value that just, we can't go out there and evaluate contrary to how we've been directed based on the manual or statute or case law.
And I guess, um, maybe this question is for City Attorney Lawrence. And I, I think she's on with us. Lynn, are you there? Uh, I guess she's.
Yes, I am. Sorry. I was having trouble unmuting.
Oh, no, no worries. Um, um, are we able to name off those who have sued the city uh, on this, uh, reduced assessments?
We would have. I don't, I can't name them off on, off the top of my head, but it would be a public record as to who has sued the city and requested reduced assessments.
The challenge that, what I hesitate to want to answer that part of your question is that it lends credence to the fact that now Luke can no, Luke couldn't go at, uh, couldn't change the value of CVS because Walgreens already did it. So CBS never had the challenge because they already benefited from it. So the challenge is, so one of the questions we get asked by WMC is, well, what lawsuits have you had? You really haven't had that many lawsuits. The reality is, is that these lawsuits are now moot. So they don't have to sue us because we have to value, uh, according to the way it is. So I, I just caution you not to get caught up in their logic because that goes against our logic that CVS is undervalued as of today, but for Luke to value it the way he believes it should be is really just, we're kind of beating our head against the wall because we're going to, we're going to ultimately lose that argument in court because it's already kind of been decided. But I think that your first question still has validity and we can do some projections, but it'll just be a projection. But I think it's a valid, it's, we need to demonstrate what we've potentially lost. So anyway, that's just my take on it. Uh, because Lynn, I mean, you've, you've tracked that enough, that argument that, well, how many lawsuits have we had? Very few, because once we lost Walgreens, that was the domino that knocked everything else down.
We've worked with the other ones and Luke in particular has worked, you know, his office has worked with the other, um, similar entities and has just taken that into consideration as we've moved forward. So.
And I guess the reason I bring that up, uh, again, this budget cycle is, you know, recently, you know, some community members were very thankful and some departments, uh, with some small donations, uh, I think, you know, a couple thousand dollars by those, but I believe we paid them a hundred and 37,000, uh, in a refund on, on one of those, uh, settlements. So, um, we, we may be, um, a little ambitious in calling those entities, uh, generous when, when they're, uh, doling out these small little, um, uh, neighborhood or, uh, donations, given the amount that we had to give them back and that. But I, um, I appreciate the information if we could follow up on it.
But I, I guess my only other comment, Luke has been valuing them according to what the law requires. So even though we may have paid them refunds, it's, it's still, any donations are, um, still donations from them. They were valued at what the law requires and how the law requires them to be valued. So I, I don't want to discourage them from, um, being generous with us in other, other ways like.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anything more with the operating budget, but I'm not sure if it's the, the second cup of coffee or this issue that's got me all charged up, but, uh, we could talk all day about this, but Luke, is there anything more in your budget or does council have any more questions about, uh, the assessor's budget per se? It's pretty, uh, it's pretty vanilla, but 22 and 23, Luke will be, uh, talking a little more. If not, Alan, what's next on your list?
Uh, that would be, uh, inspection services with John Zarotti. Uh, that would be on page 356.
Is John, John, you queued up, ready to go?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm just down on the screen.
There we go. Welcome. Well, I see Sandy. She's getting, she's on the beach. So Sandra Wentz is, John's assistant, Sandra's here. You can see her. She's got a nice, uh, tropical background. Go ahead, John.
Well, I, I'll just chime in and say John's got, uh, three budgets that we'll be looking at. One would be for inspection services. One is for rental inspections and one is for weights and measures. And we'll talk about those. And overall, uh, John's staff is responsible for all the building permits and inspections and certificates of occupancy. And maybe with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Zarotti who can talk about, uh, his great, uh, accomplishments and key performance indicators.
Um, did you want to start with inspection services then?
Yes, on page one, on 356.
Okay. So, um, some of our really good accomplishments that I think that we continue to do year after year is, um, helping out some of the local developers and businesses to get these commercial building plans reviewed, uh, in less than five days. For the last couple of years, if they were to apply it at the state for a plan review, they were probably looking at the better part of almost two months to get an appointment with the state. They have changed that and have gotten that down to I think less than a month now. But still definitely not going with five, less than five days. Um, another thing is completing all of our inspections within 48 hours over the time that someone requests them. Um, many of those are being completed within 24 hours. Um, and I think the last number I ran was about 97% of those inspections are being done within one day. The other thing we have is, uh, we are very thankful to have our current software that we have that allows us to do electronic plan review during the pandemic. Um, without that, we would have really been hindered and having, you know, people not being able to drop off plans at city hall, um, having to have staff work all at city hall to review paper plans. Um, so that, that really helped us make sure that we had those electronic plan reviews in place with our permitting software. So that really helped. Another thing that we accomplished this year is we've got an outline down for a vacant property registration, which was requested. And so we still continue to work on that. We're just about there. I think this is a matter of almost getting that in place. Um, and then one thing that we noted this year was there was a pretty big increase in our new homes, uh, 42% over last year on our new homes. Um, so that's kind of some of our major accomplishments in inspection services.
And, and some of the key performance indicators, Mr. Zarotti talked about, the building inspection requests. Like we track those on a quarterly basis and they're in the upper 90s to get those done within the 48 hours. Uh, like Mr. Zarotti said, uh, most times they're done within 24 hours. And that's been one thing that, uh, I think the development community has been very happy with the responsiveness Mr. Zarotti and his staff have getting to their projects so they can stay on schedule. A couple of other key performance indicators, uh, on page 357. Uh, there are still inspections they do for, uh, code violations around the city. Uh, I always say there's the, the three biggies would be parking on the grass or on the lawn, uh, junk and debris and, uh, uh, long grass and weeds. And that's one that, uh, the cities said that's something we expect you to be uh, proactively inspecting for, and they've done that regularly for the last several years and continue to do that. And of course they still respond to all the complaints and we're talking, uh, thousands of complaints and proactive inspections per year. And then the code, uh, code violation corrections, uh, would be, uh, another key performance indicator. And those vary with the season, but, uh, again, they're doing a lot of code violation corrections. I would say they were a little, uh, uh, when the pandemic first started and people were at home, I would say there were probably fewer complaints, uh, fewer proactive inspections, but as time has gone by, I think people have, uh, gotten, uh, the expectation that yes, we do still need to mow our lawns and we need to keep the junk and debris out of our yards and not park on the, on the front grass. So that's one thing that we are continuing to enforce throughout the city, especially on our gateway areas and some of our, uh, selected, uh, corridors.
Um, Alan, could I just ask a follow-up question? I know we've gotten a number of, uh, you know, calls in that regarding parking on grass and such. Um, is there, uh, I guess, is there any kind of specific remedy for folks that, um, planning, zoning, uh, maybe working with property owners? As we do see more, you know, folks, um, at home for longer periods of time, more cars. Uh, are there, uh, things that are being worked on to allow for, I guess, parking pads or, uh, things of that nature? Um, just kind of curious, uh, there were, there were a couple of landlords who were asking along those lines.
Uh, yes, there are zoning, uh, codes and, uh, typically Mr. Zarotti's office will work with zoning when it comes to a specific parcel and see if there's ways that a parking pad or a driveway could be widened or lengthened, uh, according to the zoning requirements. Uh, Mr. Zarotti, do you have any follow-up to that?
Yeah, that's, that is, I mean, that's, you know, like a lot of our job, it's really educational. And so, um, when these people are like, well, where do we park? And so then we do have to try to provide them with some options. And that's where like Alan said, we do work with zoning to say, you know, is it possible? Can these, these guys get a spot alongside of their garage? Is there any chance they can widen the existing driveway, something to provide some additional code compliant off-street parking?
And I guess just a quick follow-up on that then, uh, Mr. Zarotti. When a correction notice goes out or contact is made by your office with those properties, is that offered as a potential, um, solution? Or is it expected of the property owner to ask?
I guess the most cases is probably to ask. I think in, in almost all the cases. I guess the most cases probably to ask, I think, and in almost all the cases, it's just a matter, I think, that they're for whatever reason, parking on the grass. I'm not sure why they always do that, but most times there is places to park in the actual driveway. I don't know if they're, you know, happened just to move the car because their tenant or their roommate needs to leave and they just parked the car in the front yard. I'm not sure what's really going on there, but in most cases, it's just a matter of the car is parked in the grass or off the side of the driveway. I think so someone can maybe squeeze through easier to make the parking arrangements easier. So usually we don't offer that, but on all of our notices, we say, if you've got any questions, contact the issuing inspector.
So if somebody would want to inquire about widening their driveway when they would call into the inspector, the inspector would be able to educate them on that and pass them on to zoning if they can't answer any specific questions about their lot or their zoning district.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, maybe we'll go to page two, zero, five, which would be the inspection, rental inspection program.
All right. So on this, we have have had very little activity much because of COVID. So we had sent out, I think about a hundred notices in January. I want to say maybe we heard back on ten or less requests to get us back in. Or actually get to get us in for the inspection. Of those, you know, we still found the same that we had been averaging, you know, five to six typical violations for that. And then over the last few months, we've just kind of had follow ups on those. So really the rental inspections program that we tried getting in place and going really strong with. This year we've really held off. We're keeping staff out of personal homes as much as possible with this and just for our safety and also a lot of people just don't want other people in their homes. So we haven't really done anything with this since January, except for a couple of follow up inspections.
This is the area that we're also looking at building the vacant building inspection and registration program. So Mr. Zarotti has already engaged our software company to put together that program and we're working with our GIS staff to be able to send those letters out to vacant building owners because we see that becoming a bigger issue depending on how long this pandemic pandemic lasts and what happens with tenants and their landlords and what happens even with property owners or landlord owner occupied. We have a fear that this could be a repeat of two thousand eight, two thousand nine, where we could lose a lot of owner occupied buildings as well, and that became a huge problem for inspections because they became the vacant structures became almost zombies and that the foreclosures take a long time. Sometimes it takes forever for them to actually get their maintenance done and that becomes a huge detriment to the neighborhood and staff has found it difficult to track down who is responsible for doing lot on properties as time has gone by. So we're trying to be a little proactive and put together a mailing and a registration program so that we know who the names and addresses and contact information are for the vacant buildings that we have in the city and will expect to see grow in twenty twenty one, depending on how this pandemic and the economic outfall or economic impact of that of this pandemic is.
Alan, does that include commercial as well?
Yes, it's written so, commercial and residential. And we're hoping to start that January first of twenty twenty one in conformance with what the direction has been up to this point. And wanted to highlight that as one of those inspection programs that potentially the the city will be engaging in that we hadn't done in the past. We will be expecting the owner to send in photos and a property condition report type of thing. And as time goes by, we'll have the owner for the contact information if there are any long grass or weeds or junk and debris start piling up because oftentimes these properties become the neighborhood destination for large trash objects, junk and debris, even inoperable vehicles, unfortunately. So we're trying to prevent that from happening again. Mr. Zarotti, did I miss anything with that particular program?
I think you covered it. I mean, and hopefully that that registration for the vacant buildings will help us. I mean, many times, you know, ten years ago when we had that problem, it was tracking down the owner. And this way, hopefully, we're going to track it down before it becomes a problem. We were tracking them down after they became a problem. So hopefully this way we'll find them right away and then keep track of who the owner is. If we do have problems with the property, we can get the notice out and get the problem corrected.
And as I indicated earlier, we're working with our GIS staff to be able to help identify those sites so we can send them say, educational information on what they need to do to maintain their properties, to keep them in a safe condition, meet city codes, meet fire codes, make sure that it doesn't become a blighted property in the neighborhood. If there's any questions on that, otherwise we'll go to weights and measures. And that goes back to page three, five, three.
So if everyone's got that there, the weights and measures program, so just to kind of let you know what this does. So this is, we have a staff person that goes around the city to verify that any measuring device that you're paying for product for is accurate. The biggest thing probably that most notable would be gas pumps. You can see in the chart here that we've done over fifteen hundred gas pump verifications in twenty twenty. And then any of the UPC code verification, so anything that you're buying in any of the stores. One that scans in to make sure that those things actually are ringing in the right price at the register that you see on the shelves. They also check weights of things, so prepackaged, anything that's prepackaged and says it's a certain weight, they're making sure that that's the correct weight. And scales to make sure that those packages are being weighed correctly. And then timing devices. So, you know, that's anything from dryers in a laundromat, car wash, dryers as well. So it's those types of things. This started off, you know, a few years back, we had the state contract with this. We weren't real happy with the performance we were getting from the state or from the lack of measurement they had in a lot of our devices. And so then we as a city took that back over. It took about a year, maybe two years of educating the business owners as to why we're doing this because many of them hadn't even seen a state inspector doing this. Which was again reinforcing that we did have a problem with the state not really doing everything that we needed to have done. And now it's been good. So now they recognize the inspector coming in, they know it's an annual thing. And I think for the most part, they're fine with that, you know, that that way they're not cheating the customer and they're also not giving away their product either.
Anything else there?
I don't think so.
Is that it for Mr. Zarotti?
That's it for Mr. Zarotti. Then we'd have Ms. Nyforth and Economic Development and several funds that we have in Economic Development, including CDBG. And I've seen Ms. Nyforth's name up on the screen.
And what is the page, please?
That would be one, one, five to start. Again, the economic development is one of those five major goals that the city has and Ms. Nyforth and Community Development staff work very hard on those economic development goals and maybe I can turn it over to Ms. Nyforth to talk about her strategic plan, accomplishments and goals and some of the other things that we've talked about regarding economic development here and in the future.
Sure. Thank you, Alan. Well, thank you, everybody. Looking forward to talking about our budget here today and some of our accomplishments from twenty twenty and our goals for twenty twenty one. A big part of our twenty twenty started in March when we were responding to COVID. The city was one of the leaders in the state to put together a revolving loan fund specifically for businesses that were impacted by COVID. So we actually had other municipalities contacting us to say, how did you do this? How did you set it up? So we really reacted pretty quickly to get that in place. And then Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation also worked with the county to put together an RLF for countywide. So we really tried to support the businesses in our area. And we also worked with planning to put together some ways that businesses can react quickly to, you know, add additional outdoor seating and, you know, implement, you know, put more signage out where they wouldn't have to go through our usual approval process. We also put a lot of resources on websites. Myself, I worked with a lot of businesses and wrote them letters of support for the WDC World In Grant. And then we also applied for an EDA grant with a Convention and Visitors Bureau to help with entrepreneurship and business retention in the area and support some of our businesses. And then just this is ongoing. We're continuously working with our partners in the community. From an economic development standpoint, we have a weekly call and talk about different initiatives, things we're going to work on. And our grants coordinator, Darlene Brand, she was very instrumental back in March with using CDBG funds to keep the day by day warming shelter going for those folks that might have needed it. So economic development isn't just about businesses. We are, you know, helping folks that, you know, needed some more assistance back in March and then obviously still helping businesses. Another big, you know, project we had this this twenty twenty was we sold two lots in our industrial park and that was north of the railroad tracks in the Southwest Industrial Park. And that was in TID twenty three. So while we sold about forty acres worth over about, which is about one point four million dollars. So what we do is when we receive those funds, we allocate some of those funds to the land fund, which we'll talk about in a little bit here as another budget to kind of make that fun hole for the land that we purchased. And then we put the rest in the TID because the TID essentially paid for those improvements. So we are trying to divvy up those proceeds to the appropriate funds to to help both of those funds. We're still writing quite a few grants. You'll see in the accomplishments we had, we were awarded over one point five. And probably since then, you could probably, we are probably over two million dollars awarded grants and I have two that I'm waiting to hear back from. So still very aggressive with writing our grants and trying to help businesses, community initiatives and just some of our social services. So that's something we'll obviously continue doing too. And twenty twenty, there was quite a few buildings that were demoed and we'll talk about that a little bit more in the RDA budget. But a big one is forty three, seventh area, just on South Main there along Pioneer Drive. And so we're very excited with those buildings coming down. We'll look at sending out an RFP for that in twenty, late twenty twenty and hopefully in twenty one, we'll see some proposals so for we can look at redeveloping that area. Another area where there's been some acquisitions is the Jefferson Street area. If you remember, the RDA has been acquiring land there for years now and looking to kind of land bank a nice piece of property that a developer could come in and redevelop that site too. So we're making some great headway on that. And then just on, besides those projects we've had, as you see, there's a lot of development still going on around town. So we still have a lot of just active projects that we're working on. And the city is working with GOEDC on a lot of prospects right now with sending information out. So I hope that in the rest of twenty twenty and twenty twenty one will continue to be good. So moving, moving to twenty twenty one, our program is, we're aligning with all four of the objectives in the economic development goal and the city strategic plan. Account management will continue to be important and we're looking to coordinate with Greater Oshkosh to do business retention and expansion as it allows, obviously with COVID, we have to be, you know, mindful of that. We hope that we'll receive a grant with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which will help entrepreneurship and B R and E and our central city with some of the smaller businesses. And we're also looking at using some of our CDBG CARES Act funds for WHIBIC, which is basically an organization that helps disadvantaged business enterprises and helps them, you know, write business plans, get started, look for grants and loans. So we're looking to utilize their services to hopefully help some of those disadvantaged businesses in our area too. And we, oh, sorry, I thought there was a question. And we'll also look at doing, continuing to pursue land sales. We have a few prospects right now north of the track. So we will hopefully continue to sell land and create increment in TID twenty three. And another big thing is, I know planning mentioned this earlier about the housing study that they're looking to do, but that's also very important for economic development too. Housing is a big thing as far as just for, you know, trying to get, have that diverse housing selection for folks coming in. So it's workforce housing that people that work here can afford to live here, but that executive housing. So we are very interested in that study and will obviously work with implementing that study when it is completed. And then working with Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation and they are going for their next capital catalyst grant from WDC for entrepreneurs. And that's something that we work with them pretty closely too. So I think it's going to be a busy twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, and we're very excited. So looking at the budget overall, just for economic development, it's remaining largely the same. There's no major changes in either direction. And like I said, a lot of it is, we just have a lot of tasks with the strategic plan that we're looking to follow for our twenty twenty one program. Is there any other questions?
Yes, Kelly, on the twenty twenty one goals, it lists report on economic development KPIs. I'm not seeing the KPIs for this year. What are you measuring success on?
Sure. Well, the economic development, we have multiple KPIs. We have KPIs that we report quarterly to you through the city strategic plan. And then we also have those KPIs, the metrics that each department has. So a lot of our KPIs are, we talk about, you know, how much, how many, what's the private investment versus TID funds and projects? You know, what's that ratio? How much public support does GOEDC have versus private support? We also work with inspections as far as trying to get projects through the city process as quick as possible. So some of those we work with them on. And then we also work with some housing KPIs also. So our, our goal is, you know, to have those KPIs out, but we we already are kind of on that schedule where they get out quarterly, which you guys receive copies of, I believe.
Right. But I'm looking for the annual KPIs for your department overall for economic development.
So we have the KPIs that the city each department has for metrics. And I guess I'd have to talk with the staff member that how often she gets that out. And Alan, I don't know. I know you're working on that a little bit more than I am. Do you know when that next round is coming out?
I think the, the third quarter should be done in this month. So and some of our numbers are only reported annually. So I know there's, there's going to be things on the funding, the grants programs we've gotten, whether we've gotten Riverwalk projects done or segments completed. And other things that you've mentioned, how much investment we've gotten in all our TIF districts and how many employees there are in each TIF district. As well as what kind of business retention and account management we've been doing. So those are just off the top of my head and I want to say you probably have ten or fifteen of those. But they don't make the budget book, so I don't have them right in front of me, but I'm, we prepare them on a quarterly basis. We're on a regular basis.
So Russ, maybe you can address this then. I, I thought we were, and, and this is some requests from folks in the community about, you know, the six hundred fifty thousand dollar, you know, expense.
you know, the $650,000, you know, expenses and how that ties back to KPIs in the budget book here with relation to this department. And I understand what you're saying, that each of the other departments kind of roll that out quarterly and we get those reports. But I, I guess I thought we were going to have those with each of the departments for the budget book.
Mayor, we've tried to do that. I guess there was just a little bit of a mix-up in getting it in for this department. We'll certainly work at getting that for the final document and getting, getting it to you as soon as we can.
Thank you.
And just FYI, the third quarter update for the strategic plan, Diane confirmed it'll be on November 10.
Was there any other questions? Otherwise, we can move on to some of our other, our other budgets.
Yeah, you've got a few more economic development accounts, right?
We do, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we can move on to the next one. It's on, we'll talk about the local economic development RLF. It's on page 214. And this one is, which I kind of mentioned earlier, we have that revolving loan fund that Greater Oshkosh administers. So you'll see here that we do have projected that Greater Oshkosh will have some loans coming out. And then we did have some funds that went out as part of the COVID RLF. But we are under a million as far as our balance goes, which is good. And the, you know, that it is being used and all of the, the loans that Greater Oshkosh administers, all the loans are current. So their committee does a really good job. They have a really good committee of folks that really takes a look at those loans and make sure that those applications will be, you know, good applications that folks are responding or paying back those and have the ability to. So, so that we're, we're happy that that loan is being, this program is being utilized.
And just to chime in here, we also use the RLF as the local match for the WDC Capital Catalyst Funding that GOEDC is applied for. And that would be about $125,000 from the revolving loan fund and $125,000 from WDC. The nice thing about the WDC funds is they never have to be repaid back to WDC and some of that can go out to the businesses as grants. Some of it's loans from WDC, but some of it's grants with city funds. It all has to be loans because we have an expectation that's going to revolve for future small business startups in the future as well. So just wanted to bring, bring that to your attention.
Yeah, thank you, Alan.
Yeah, so even though there's reduction in the fund balance, we're, we're making good use of it. We still have a, a good fund balance left. And we're not even projecting any refunds or, excuse, not refunds, repayments. So any repayment will add to fund balance, but being conservatively estimating, we're, we're not anticipating any repayments, even though we don't have a single loan that's behind.
Correct.
Okay, if there's no other questions, let's talk about our Community Development Special Fund.
I'm sorry, Kelly, before, yeah, before you move on, I did just kind of jot down another question and that was, you mentioned assistance for entrepreneurship and that, do you guys have a rough idea of how many new businesses we were able to assist or retain?
Um, I don't have that number offhand.
Okay.
But it's something I could probably get somewhat of a.
Well, we can wait until the update that comes out in November too.
Sure, sure. Yeah. Okay, um, and the Community Development Special Fund is on page 186. Okay, and this is a fund that basically we use as a fund just to have to pass through to, for grants. We have quite a few grants that the city applies for on behalf of developers where the city has to apply for it. And we, you know, the city retains some funds for admin time, but then a lot of those funds just go through the, to the developer. So this is used for WC grants, redevelopment grants that we have here in the, an EPA grant also I see in here too. So like I said, it's just kind of a fund that we use to keep grants. We receive the money and then usually we, we send a check out to the developer. Alan, did you have anything else to add about this one?
No, that's, what's the purpose of the fund? It's our best guess right now as to what 2021 is. If we get another grant, we might have to come back for a budget adjustment because you never know exactly what we're going to be working on in 21. This, here in 2020.
Yeah, well, we did kind of think of the grants that we might go for in 2021, that we might get and plan for them in here. But like Alan said, there's always some times the surprise grant that we're not planning on going for that we go before, so we would need to come forward at that point.
Kelly?
Yep.
How many of the grants, I guess what percentage of those grants are successful in general?
Oh, we have a pretty good success rate here at the city. Alan, what would you say? I would say 90?
I was going to say, I was going to say 80, so 80 or 90, but I can believe.
Yeah, I mean, we're pretty, we're, you know, when we submit a grant, we are pretty confident that, you know, it was written well and it's, it's going to score well. So we're, we're, we're pretty aggressive with grants too. So that helps us. We apply for a lot, which helps that ratio also.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Another thing, could you just talk a little bit about the contractual services expense? It seems like a rather large amount over $2 million for looking at 2020, original projected over the 2019.
That's, that's based on what we would actually spend out of that grant funds, out of those grant funds. So that, that's, that's part of the in and out. We'll have a contract with the developer or the, and the state, and that's where those funds actually get transferred out then.
Okay, thank you. Was there any other questions? Otherwise, we can move along. Let's go talk about our industrial and business parks for their land fund. That's page 335. This was, I mentioned this earlier, our industrial enterprise land, Parkland Fund. This fund was set up that they use this to purchase land. And so when we have land sales, we've been trying to take the proceeds and divide them up accordingly to make this land fund whole for the amount of money that it was spent to purchase the land. And then the rest of the land goes into that, whatever TIF that the parcel is in to repay the TIF for the improvements that the TIF made, like the road and the, the utilities and everything. So, so fortunately this year, we had some funds that were added to the land fund here that will hopefully help, hope to help the city. Was there any specific questions about this one?
What is the land fund limited to in terms of purchases?
It's, um.
Those are just industrial parks. So when we, when we purchased, the Clark Hill Farm was the last property we probably purchased back in '09, maybe even '08, right after I started. So, so we haven't had a lot of activity until we got the transload facility. And then Kelly's been busy working on getting those properties sold on the north side. So this is our first activity in a number of years. So the fact that we haven't bought anything in a while is probably what precipitated the question because there's, that was before Kelly was even with us. I think even before Alan was with us. I mean, it's, it's been a long time since we purchased anything, unless we got anything on the north side, Alan, that I forgot about.
No, we haven't. We do have land, the Boschwitz property, but we have not developed that and have not sold any of that land yet. So Clark Hill is the only one that really has improvements that we could really sell. And I, I want to make sure you're aware that Ms. Nyforth has worked on the Avalon Paper sale, the Foreimprint sale, and the Viking Electric sale. And those all happened in the last year or two. And I'm not sure where they, they fit on this list, but we've sold more land in the last two or three years than the previous seven or eight.
And Foreimprint too, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it used to be, pre-2008, we would buy land one year, design it for improvements the next year, and then put in the improvements the following year. And it was almost out in the southwest industrial park, we were very methodically doing that, that and the north side. And '08 hit and we were, we did, we bought the Clark Hill Farm and then everything froze up. And it wasn't until these last couple of years that, we're, we're not using up enough land as we used to, but we're finally getting some, some activity because this fund is land-rich but cash-poor. So the fund balance there reflects, on page 320, 335, excuse me, reflects the value of our property, which so we're fine on the fund balance side, but if you look at our cash, it's not so good. So every land sale that Kelly's been able to facilitate is getting us into a better position than we were literally. I think somebody said we hadn't had a land sale in seven, eight years. This is the best position we've been in, in, in that long time period.
Yep.
Okay.
Alan, what's, Kelly, what's next?
RDA, that's on page 371. As I mentioned earlier, the RDA has also been very busy this, this year with doing quite a bit of blight removal and, you know, purchasing buildings for remediation and for land banking and hopefully to redevelop. And then also another big achievement for the RDA was this year, we sold the last three remaining parcels in the Marion Road redevelopment area to merge. So at this point, the city does not have any available, RDA does not have any available parcels in the Marion, Marion Road redevelopment area. And that was 20 years in the making. So it's, it's a big achievement that that whole area will be constructed and built out. So we're very excited about that also. And the goals is just to continue to acquire, you know, blighted properties in specific areas and then try to, you know, work to implement the Sawdust District Master Plan and the South Shore Master Plan or wherever is needed. Alan, I don't know if you had anything else as far as the budget goes that you wanted to touch on?
Maybe I could just give an update regarding the RDA. We recently sent out an RFP for community gardens, the sites that we have acquired around the city that are kind of the small lots and residential neighborhoods. We're expecting to be able to review those this winter and allow community gardens to be installed next spring. And we've got just about everything done with the 43th Seventh RFP. They're in the Sawdust District. We're just waiting on some environmental contamination tests to come back. We hope to have that done in November and be able to send that out then so that we can start soliciting those proposals for redevelopment of those eight or nine acres. And we're looking at kind of a method where the RDA could entertain applications throughout the entire winter or spring, kind of like a position that's open until filled. And I know there is probably three or four people that are waiting in the wings that would like to respond to that. So hopefully the COVID won't deter too many people because we already have a handful of people that are, have expressed interest in putting a proposal together. So that'll be a 2021 accomplishment. Yes.
Yes, Alan, can you just talk a little bit more about the RFP for the community gardens? That that's open to community groups or neighborhoods and that? And where they can find that application process to, to put forth those applications to utilize and garden on some of those spots?
Yes, that, I don't know off the top of my head where it is on the, the city's website, but we could email that out. If you, if somebody would want to call my office, 236-5055, we could, we could forward that to anybody right now. The community garden, we're sending it out to the neighborhood associations. And I talked a little bit, we've talked a little bit about it over the last few months with the neighborhood associations and GoHNI for those types of interests, activities for a neighborhood. We'll also send it to other similar organizations from Habitat to Advocat, to Growing Oshkosh, to the Food Co-op, to even civic organizations that might have an interest in sponsoring a community garden type of thing. So.
So will we list that on the website then? If somebody goes, for example, to the city website and, you know, wants to know what's going on with community gardens in the city of Oshkosh, they can do a search and find that link of what's going on?
Yes, I believe it's on the economic development website. I'm getting text messages and emails from people around me right now saying where it is. So it's on the city's economic development website right now.
Yeah, Alan, if you could provide that separate because we're, we're got, we have 12 minutes left for your department, even though I, I'm guilty of cutting into that time, but I know some council members want to take a break at 10 o'clock as well. So if you can provide that information to the mayor separately, that would be appreciated.
Yes.
Sure. Well, then let's move on to CDBG. That's page 211. Darlene, are you on the line? Okay, well.
I don't see Darlene on the list.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I don't see you either. Alan, maybe you could start with the CDBG and then maybe Darlene will hop on.
Sure, if you recall, the city gets an allocation as an entitlement community from the federal government, Housing and Urban Development. And we put that towards housing and blight removal and public services around the city. And we've, we are required to spend all those funds, otherwise we'll get docked for not spending those funds. So we've always spent all those funds in those areas. The housing, the owner occupied and rental rehabilitation are very popular. We continue to use those. The slum and blight missions, we use a few hundred thousand dollars a year to acquire and demolish some of the central city, I would describe as blighted properties. That usually goes through the RDA. So the RDA would blight that property and then we could use block grant funds to acquire and demolish that. And that can pay for the tipping fees and the asbestos investigation. And then last but not least, the local public service agencies, we solicit public service agencies for any programs that they would be offering to low and moderate income individuals in the city. That ranges from Clarity Care to Christine Anne, to Literacy, to health and dental type of programs. The homeless shelter, day-by-day homeless shelter gets an allocation. Actually, we get about $120,000 to spend on that type of activity, which is the maximum we can spend. And then we have a group of representatives from United Way and the Foundation and the city to select those applicants. And I think we just went through that program for the regular application. This does not have anything to do with the COVID CDBG funds, and that's another allocation that we've recently received. And you should have read the newsletter update that they will, will be going through the process to update our plan to include the COVID funds for CDBG. And that's where we're expecting to spend more on homeless services, some economic development programs that we've been trying to develop. We could still be doing more public services in general because I expect there's going to be more medical and dental and other services needed for the community. So we'll be working on that later this fall with all the service providers to put together a program for that particular COVID fund. So you won't see that in the budget quite yet, but I wanted to highlight that right now. So that's the block grant in general. Our annual allotment, as you can see, we're expecting about $850,000. We're fully creeping back to what we. We're slowly creeping back to what we had back in the 90s and early 2000s where we had over a million dollars, and they cut us down to about $600,000, and now we've been creeping back up a little higher each year, it seems. Any questions on CDBG entitlement?
If you could, for the, for the public, Alan, just briefly talk a little bit about when some of these properties are acquired with CDBG funds through the RDA and that there's some, you know, questions about why we tear them down instead of converting them or rehabbing them for, you know, rental or sales. It's been my understanding that, you know, a number of those that have been acquired have not been in a condition that could be rehabbed, but there's quite a bit of discussion in the community at the moment about that.
Yes, with all these potential acquisitions and demolitions, we inspect those properties and see if we can rehab them first, and we've done that a few times. But typically, these projects have sat vacant, or they've been unfortunately poorly maintained for so many years that we just can't pencil out anything that makes sense that would rehab a project. If you're acquiring the property, even if they donate it to you, it could cost over $100,000, $150,000 to rehab it, and you can tear it down for about 15 to 20. So that is kind of the calculation. We've rehabbed where we can, but if we can't get any kind of, come close to breaking even on that, we'll tear it down and then offer it for redevelopment. And we've had Advocap and Habitat purchase those lots for redevelopment then, so they'll put a new house on those parcels.
Yes, thank you, and then that kind of circles back around to something you mentioned earlier about the rental inspections program and, I'm sorry, the vacant building registry, where we want to avoid having too many of those properties sit vacant, unattended, unmaintained, correct? Would that start in January?
That is correct, yes. And these could put us on a quicker pipeline for something like that. However, still, the goal is for the vacant buildings, as the property owners maintain those vacant buildings, we just want to make sure we bring it to their attention when they fall behind. So if they end up to the point where it needs to be, there's so many code violations that they are no longer maintained, typically, the property owner will reach out to staff to say, I'd like to either donate or sell the building at X number of dollars, and then we bring that to the RDA in closed session to determine whether they think it's a worthy purchase. And the RDA also considers whether it's worth rehabbing or tearing down and what the redevelopment potential would be, and who our housing partners might be that might want to purchase the property. Sometimes we have to sit on a piece of property because it's become so dilapidated that we want to tear it down, and we have no buyer in the immediate future, but oftentimes, we can find a buyer quickly for that lot. So hopefully, it accelerates the reuse of these vacant buildings, if not demolition and redevelopment on those blighted properties.
Thanks for sharing that detail. So the idea is to prevent further blight by trying to catch it early. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Alan, can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
So since it got brought up again, so what's the budget, actual allocation for supporting that then? Because council hasn't discussed that much at all, so I'm interested in hearing, and I know, I think at least one of the advisory groups has, but council hasn't discussed this in much detail at all, because we haven't, we haven't seen the program. But, you know, when the rental inspection program got rolled out, you asked for, asked for a budget allocation to support it, because obviously, we don't have extra staff time to be adding additional duties. So what's the allocation for supporting such a program?
Well, we're actually implementing a law that's on the books in the zoning code. The zoning was updated, and we, the staff just hadn't had the capability of implementing that until just recently, when it was brought to our attention. So Mr. Zarati's actually worked with the existing software developer to provide the registration at a very nominal cost, so there is very little budget impact. Our expectation is that his existing budget will absorb any kind of activities due to that activity, the vacant buildings. So there's no budget enhancement requested at this point.
Good, thank you.
Alan, should we go under the CDBG RLF, page 214?
Yeah.
Page 214 is kind of an artificial budget in that the best way for us to, when the properties get a loan from CDBG to rehab their house, when they sell that house, then they have to repay the CDBG loan. That revenue comes into the RLF fund, and we spend that on more owner rehab loans. So that's just a function of how many people sell their houses and how much money we get in, and then we reloan that out for other projects, so.
Excuse me, Alan, can you clarify that page?
Um.
I don't think it's 214, that's the GOEDC loan.
I apologize. Hold on one minute, let me.
I looked at the wrong one.
I'm just scrolling, let's see.
Russ, can you help maybe?
I was gonna say, Anna, are you on the line?
It's page 135.
135, thank you.
Whoever rescued us, thank you.
It's Darlene.
Oh, she came through. I hadn't heard her yet. I don't see, I don't see her name on the board even.
I think she's Kelly Greenscreen.
She's in it, just shows as Kelly, so I'm one of the Kellys out there.
She's a Kelly Green, Kelly. Thank you, Darlene. Page 135. So now that it makes sense, Alan, could you repeat that for council?
Yes, when we get our original entitlement funds, we loan those to property owners for improvements on their property. It could be 10 years later, it could be 20 years later, they sell that house, and then they have to pay the CDBG fund back, and that revenue counts towards the city. We put that in the RLF fund to then reloan to another property owner to rehab their house. So it's just basically CDBG funds from a sale to a new housing rehabilitation project. And we do that so that we follow HUD rules, makes it easier to follow the HUD rules and keep it, keep those funds in the city rather than returning them to the federal government. Did I miss anything, Ms. Brandt?
Nope, sounds good.
And then we have probably 35 pages worth of TIF districts to talk about. I'm not sure you need to talk about anything specific, I'm not going to highlight anything other than to say most of the recent TIF projects are all PEGOs. So that's just a function of what is their value this year, and what does our agreement say we rate them a check for, and that's what we try to estimate for 2021. The TIF districts for PEGOs are all doing very well, they're operating as we've expected them to, and, let's see.
And that's starting on page 220, if anybody wanted to flip to that.
Alan or Kelly, there's a, how many TIFs are due to expire within the next few years?
Oh, I think we extended one or two for the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative funding, but they're relatively small TIFs, so that's a few thousand, $10,000 or $20,000. We probably don't have any really big TIFs paying off until you get closer to 2026 or 2028, when you'd have some of the TIF 15 or TIF 17 or TIF 21 paying off, and those will be some substantial dollars at some point, so.
I just wanted that to get pointed out, because the Healthy Neighborhoods Fund isn't going to get any big influx of cash for probably six, seven years, so we've got to be judicious in how we spend those monies, because the TIFs are, the ones that are closing up are pretty small potatoes.
Kelly, what page? It starts on page 220, all the TIF budgets.
Thank you.
Yeah.
These go into the annual report that we provide the council. Kelly or Alan, when did we, we probably did that mid-year with the year-end reports on the TIFs? So each of the.
Your time thing that we do.
Okay.
Because we also report the number of jobs and the values that they have in each TIF.
Okay.
The biggest TIF expense we have this year will be TIF 23, when we finish the roads out in the Transload Industrial Park. Is that right, Ms. Nyforth?
That's right, that's the one where we received $1.5 million for the EDA grant, which we just had a newsletter that we're up to bid now, so hoping that project will be completed next year.
And TIF 23 is on page 259, so, I mean, they're all the same sort of format for all these TIFs are pretty much the same, but you can see TIF 23, and if you have any questions, we can certainly answer those.
Just a brief question that came in from the community, they wanted to know just in general how TIF 24, the Oshkosh Corporation, was performing. I know it's early, but thought I would respond to that.
Well, I'm very glad that the city went with the PEGO version of the development incentives because their value assessed by the Department of Revenue came in much lower than people were expecting. So the PEGO has been operating as planned, they get about $275,000 to $300,000 per year, depending on their value, and the good news is, it looks like they've made some improvements on the property and their value will be going up a little bit in 2021, so.
That's the ECO facility held by Oshkosh and Wauka, that's not the headquarters that Alan's talking about.
Thank you, Kelly, yeah.
Because that's, that's TIF 34, and this is 24, so this is what makes sure everybody's aware.
But it's a similar answer, and it goes to Luke's point earlier about the manufacturing values, you know, we don't control those, we have certain minimum assessments, our minimum values that we get, you know, minimum payments, so they get the payment there. In the case of 24, we had done that as a PEGO TIF as well, and at first, they were a little surprised that their payment was so low, and I think our comment was, look at your tax bill, that'll explain why your payment's so low, and then they understood it, and it made sense. And 34, I think, is a similar type of story, but we have a minimum value as well there.
And TIF 35 will probably be doing very well, that's the Oshkosh Avenue TIF, and we've had a lot of millions of dollars of development in that TIF, so that'll help pay off those improvements on, along Oshkosh Ave, Westfield, and Keller.
And the idea there then is to bankroll that, those funds for eventual other improvements along Oshkosh Avenue, including eventually the redoing of the Sawyer and Oshkosh Avenue intersection. Don't get too worked up for it, but that was the, that's the big project that's planned for that one, that's why we separated those TIFs. The Oshkosh Corp. incentive is one TIF, and the improvements along Oshkosh Ave are the other ones, but first, we got to pay off those improvements that we have in place, but the debt service there, if I'm reading this correctly, on page 297, our debt is, minimal debt is due to be paid off in 2036, 2037, so we're, so we'll, as those values go up, we'll be able to bankroll money for, for future improvements. But the big one, Sawyer and Oshkosh Ave. Anything else at the other TIFs, any questions? There's a lot of TIFs there, and certainly, from a budget standpoint, as Alan said, PEGOs make the budgeting relatively easy because it's in and out, but if you have any other questions, you know, you can certainly follow up with Alan or Kelly as well. Otherwise, anything after TIF, because we're after 10 o'clock, and I kind of want to try to stay on schedule, even though I'm the one who ruined it for you guys, so I owe you, I owe you 20 minutes, actually, but you guys did nice. Mayor, members of council, anything else with the TIFs? Is that it, Alan, are TIFs the last one?
That'll be the last one.
Otherwise, Mayor, I'd recommend that we just take a break and maybe go 10:20?
Yes, originally, it was like, yeah, 10 to 10:15, so we're at 10:07, so does that work for everybody, 10:20, recently?
Works for me.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
See you in 12 minutes.
Thank you.
Kind of, oh, you.
I don't know. I thought I'd fly.
I said, you have a. Okay. You don't have an app?
No, I don't.
Jennifer, you should muse out your room.
Unmute, Mike.
Hey.
Hey.
How are you doing?
All right. I saw your I saw your lips moving, but I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I know. I was just reading out loud, actually.
Oh, okay.
I'm grading a a quiz on ancient river civilizations that my son just took.
Double duty, split screens.
Only, as I said, only since April. I got my wife to agree yesterday that when when this is all over, I'm going to just turn her out for a week.
I saw a great, somebody showed me a picture and it was a clearly like a SUV type of family car and on the side of it said, you lied to me when you said my child was a joy to have in class.
Okay, we are live on the air.
Thanks for that reminder. We are administrative services is up first and according to Mr. Fitzpatrick, human resources is first up. So our HR manager, Michelle Benke, Ms. Benke, is it you or Fitz are going to get started?
I think, Mark, if it's okay, I'll just start and then we'll just throw it to the division heads for more info.
Very good. Go ahead, Fitz. Thank you.
Okay, just to back up a little bit, administrative services, I just wanted to give you a a brief overview. We have three divisions. Mark mentioned human resources and in that division we have subunits of HR, benefits, organizational development and safety. And then general services, we'll be talking about about that division in a little while. There's purchasing, Oshkosh median facilities maintenance in that division. And then finally, information technology and Tony has his division broken down into his team of analysts, networking folks, and then desktop folks and then GIS. So that's just a brief overview.
Could I just ask you, if you would, to mention page numbers as you're going along?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So the first budget is human resources, as Mark mentioned, and that's on page twenty-six. And, you know, as you've been talking about, I've been listening in a little bit with community development. It's been a busy year for human resources with all the things that have been taken care of and but we're excited about next year. We're especially excited about the opportunity for us to work on some of our diversity and inclusion initiatives. We very much appreciate the council providing additional funding for that. We are we have contracted with a group called FEI. They're a nationwide company. They're based out of Atlanta. City manager Roloff and I and Michelle Benke got a chance to meet with with their principal in person, Terry Howard. She's got a tremendous amount of experience. She actually has some local experience too. I know Mark conveyed this to you at a council meeting, but you know, just to to recover it real briefly, she's she attended Lawrence University here in Wisconsin for a short time. And she joked a little bit with us telling us that she spent most of her weekends here in Oshkosh, though. So she's very familiar with our community. And they're very excited to get working with us. Just a small a bit of a background about them. They're wholly owned by what's called the Alliance for Strong Families and Communities. FEI is a subsidiary of that group. And for those of you that may not be familiar with that organization, they're they work with thousands of social sector leaders and organizations across the country. And their focus is advancing equity for people to provide equal access and opportunity for organizational excellence, population health and well-being, economic opportunity, educational success, safety and resilience. So we think because of that philosophy and their experience, not only with diversity and inclusion, but also they started with their company in regard to EAP and a lot of different kinds of services that are organizational oriented, that they're going to be a great match for us. And not only for us, but also potentially in the future, working with the DEI committee. You know, Mark has mentioned that they're a very thoughtful group and I I ordinarily participate in their meetings, but Mark sat in for me this last time and they're, I think, gonna do some great things, but they're just trying to be thoughtful in terms of how they start. So that's one of the major things I wanted to highlight with human resources. You can see from our KPI in regard to workforce ethnicity that we're making a little bit of progress over time. The the benchmark that we have there is not the best, I would say, because it's, you know, we're relying on trended data from the Census Bureau. And also, it doesn't necessarily correlate with the types of positions that we have. But I think it's an indicator. And I think you know from discussions with me in the past that we're still refining our our strategic planning, our KPIs, and the next initiative is trying to get more meaningful benchmarks so we can refine those KPIs. So it's a good start. I think we have some work to do and you can see by this trended number that we're at about five percent, our community's at about ten percent. So. Any questions in regard to any of those issues, just to start? Okay, great. In our budget itself, there isn't really a lot of change. The only changes that are really reflected, and I know you're not getting into the individual line items, but I just wanted to, excuse me, correlate what I just talked about with the with the numerics and Finance Director Van Gompo placed that budget amendment in our budget. So that's why there's some anomalies there, you know, in terms of the line items. But otherwise, it's a pretty static budget. Any other questions about HR? I guess one one additional thing I'll mention is I know you're going to hear from Chief Stanley and Chief Smith in the future, today and tomorrow, about tuition reimbursement and training. And I think you all know that that's been an initiative that we've had in our strategic plan for a while that we haven't been able to accomplish. And we've been doing significant analysis in terms of what we expend now. And also, we've taken a look at our classification structures, our job families, to try to make sure that we are doing our due diligence in terms of research and what we need. So we very much support the idea of a tuition reimbursement program. But there's a difference between that and actual training. So you'll hear more specifically about the needs that are going to be expressed by our protective service folks. But we intend to be involved and the chiefs have made it known that they want us to be involved. And we have to make that distinction between training and then an overall program that's really more tuition reimbursement oriented. So that'll be a future item of discussion as we go forward, just to give you a heads up on that. So that's really all I have for HR unless there are any questions. Okay, the next budget that we have, and I'm just going to go to make it easy, just straightforward with the budget book. So the next one is page forty-two and that's purchasing. And that's in general services. And John Urban is the division manager in charge of purchasing. Give you a chance to get there. It's again, it's been a real busy year for purchasing. You know, one of the things I'm really proud of in terms of our division heads and not only our division heads, but our employees in administrative services is it's my expectation, and you know, this is an expectation that's placed on me from city manager Roloff for all the departments, that, you know, they work successfully together. And, you know, I think the configuration in administrative services, although it may look like a hodgepodge, they really do work well together. And I think the placement of these functional areas in one department really lend themselves to working well together. And an example that I can give you of that is one of the things that we mentioned on our performance report related to DocuSign. This was a project that we were working on early on and we used attorneys and clerks as kind of a pilot group just to get their thoughts. And they were very much supportive i- in terms of this idea of us going forward with it. They talked to some of their colleagues and and they were very pleased with the functionality of that.
Fitz, if you could, excuse me, as a courtesy, let council know what DocuSign is. You're you're they may not all be aware of it.
Sure. And so DocuSign is a software that allows us to electronically execute contracts. And so where in the whereas in the past, we we'd ship contracts around, it may be difficult to know where they were. They were paper form. This really speeds that process up. And if any of you have refinanced or bought a new house, you might be familiar with the software. It's very easy to use. So information technology was working on this as a goal along with purchasing and and some of our departments and then COVID hit. And although we wanted to work this methodically through our organization, the thought process was, you know, this would be a great tool to implement right now in its totality in order to facilitate movement of these documents electronically so we could not bog down any of the projects that the council wanted to approve, that city manager wanted to get going, that our departments wanted to get moving. So, you know, we talked about it as a team and we said, yes, let's let's talk to city manager Roloff. Let's talk to Finance Director Van Gompo. We talked to those those guys and they said, yes, you know, good idea, get going with it. And I was really proud that, you know, John and Tony and his folks were, you know, poised and ready to do this because I think it really helped us organizationally when it was necessary. And we're having really positive reviews from the employees. They're very excited about modernizing, you know, not only They're very excited about modernizing, you know, not only s- straight line contracts as, as Mark and I were mentioning, but, you know, a lot of other, um, bureaucratic paperwork, for lack of a better description, that we can modernize just to make it, uh, easier for us and quicker for us to deal with this. So it's just one quick example. I don't want to drone on and bore you with all this stuff. But, um, you know, I was very happy that they were ready to do this. And when the time came, we executed it and, uh, you know, we got the support from, um, departments like legal and clerks and finance and also city manager Roloff. So, so that's just one quick example, um, in purchasing. Again, with COVID, there's been a lot of work that's been done. And, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, you know, wonderful, uh, effort that's been put forth there too, across departmental lines. So in terms of the numerics, it's a pretty status quo budget. There's, there's really not much to see there. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
John, a question from, uh, the community, um, it kind of floats back and forth between, well, I suppose, HR and, um, purchasing. And that is, uh, are we measuring and/or if we are measuring, you know, how we're performing in terms of contracting with women and minority-owned businesses?
In terms of like disadvantaged, disadvantaged minority business enterprise, is that what you're talking about, Lori?
Yes, and I believe, um, Kelly referenced earlier too, you know, starting to look at doing some work with GOEDC and WIBIC, uh, which is, uh, women and minority-owned businesses and/or, uh, you know, veteran-owned businesses.
We don't, we don't have a formalized program, but we do, um, encourage, um, contracting with those, with businesses in that kind of construct. And I know, um, John Urban is on, uh, online here and he can certainly add more to that i- if you'd like us to.
Just curious if we're, you know, if we are, um, measuring that, how many of our contracts go to, um, those challenged businesses, business owners?
John, do you have a sense?
Well, as you said, John, I, I echo what you said. We don't really have a, a formal process to measure that right now. We do throw it out there like we do everything to as many different avenues and sources as we can. So, um, yeah, we don't have a formal measurement, Lori.
I think right now it's probably better in the, in the, uh, wheelhouse for economic development, because quite honestly, we don't have a lot of, uh, minority-owned businesses. We do have, yeah, obviously more women-owned businesses, but we don't have, uh, and I'm just telling you anecdotally, we don't have a lot of businesses, uh, within Oshkosh. So it really is something incumbent upon economic development. And I know that's why, um, Ms. Nyforth and Mr. White with GOEDC have been working to expand, um, the number of businesses. Uh, and then we can certainly, uh, talk to them, but we need, we need to do a more rigorous, uh, uh, making people aware and, uh, giving them the tools to, uh, be able to create the businesses to start with. But, uh, we don't have a lot of those yet. And I know Mr. White has, uh, has recognized that's as a, as a deficiency in our overall economy.
Okay, any other questions on purchasing? All right. The next, uh, budget is information technology and that's on page forty-three. And as I mentioned earlier, um, you know, I talked about the components of information technology and also a little bit about COVID. And, um, I think all of you know, it's been a very busy year for information technology because of those two issues, but also because of the cyber attack that we had in January. And I don't think anybody wishes to have a cyber attack, uh, certainly. But, you know, there were a lot of great things that came out of it for us. Um, we had an opportunity to reexamine our security system, our hardware, our, um, training in terms of how our folks take a look at, uh, information that's sent to them electronically, whether it be through email or, or other means. And, um, I think we've been able to really incorporate a lot of improvements. And I'm really, and Tony can speak for himself, I'm glad that if we had to have it happen, that it happened before COVID too, because I think certainly we're a much stronger, uh, information technology. We have a much stronger infrastructure now than we did before, not that it was deficient. But, and also I think we are doing a much better job training our employees, making sure they're, they're cognizant and recognize, you know, some of the circumstances. We were able to implement some InfoSec training software that everybody participates in on a regular basis. And I think Tony did a really nice job explaining it to our organization. It's not designed to catch people doing peo- doing the wrong thing. It's designed to keep us prepared, um, because constantly there unfortunately are folks who are trying to, um, infiltrate our network and others. So it's, it's unfortunate that that is the state of affairs right now, but it's something that we just need to be vigilant about and, and prepared for. So Tony, I think, you know, because of the extraordinary stuff that happened this year, and I know you've been asked to speak at a variety of different conferences and have talked to a lot of other, uh, organizations, since that cyber attack, maybe you want to just mention a few things that, that I haven't in, in my high-level comments?
Yeah, it, um, did bring to light some areas. I mean, everybody sits back with a comfortable feeling, thinking that they're going to, uh, not have issues. The one thing that I have reiterated to many agencies, it's not a matter of if you're going to get breached, it's a matter of when you're going to get breached. And unfortunately, it didn't happen to us. Um, I think that through the, uh, leadership and staff that we have within the city, we were able to recover with very minimal expense and in a very short window. I cannot say enough positive things about how the response was executed. And, um, it, it just speaks volumes to how everybody was able to, uh, pull together and get us back up and running with minimal interruption to the citizens.
I, I would just add to what Tony said too. You know, a few years back, we talked about the addition of cyber, uh, security insurance. And, um, I really appreciate the fact that the council supported us with that effort. Because if we wouldn't have had that in place, you know, the costs would have been, um, extreme. So, you know, it's, it's, it was really a team effort, the staff, um, the support, uh, departments, like finance, for example, um, you know, working with insurance, um, and city manager Roloff always. But, um, but also the council, you know, if you wouldn't have had the foresight to, you know, approve that initiative initially, we would have been in a much more difficult situation. And I don't know if we would have recovered quickly enough to then be able to deal with all the issues associated with COVID. And, and what I mean by that is, you know, uh, preparing our equipment and our employees and working with our supervisors to facilitate remote work, um, options for our folks. You know, taking a look at all the different functions that we have and thinking about how they can be done remotely, and efficiently and easy. And, um, you know, because we were able to get the cyber attack behind us and then move on to this very next important phase, um, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of the work that the employees did and, and I think continue to do.
Just a question, uh, for, for Tony then, uh, what would you say the biggest, um, learning outcome there was about resiliency through this experience?
We actually had, um, a lot of positive things in place which allowed us to recover as quickly as we did. One of the, one of the biggest things that was brought to the forefront is end user education, which many of council members have seen our wonderful, um, phishing simulations. And, uh, who we can actually snag on those and who is learning through, uh, time. And that is probably the single biggest point of failure in any organization is people. And this is going to try to close that gap.
You know, one last addition too, you know, I mean, the, the WebEx that we're experiencing right now and the use of that WebEx across our organization, that was a, um, something that we had considered and put in place, um, proactively, you know, we had never thought that it was going to be used to this degree. But, uh, I think we're fortunate that we were able to work on that and plan ahead for that. And then one final thing, and going back to collaboration inside administrative services, um, you know, ourselves, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of the work that, um, not only information technology has done, but also Oshkosh Media. You know, John Urban and his folks in Oshkosh Media facilitating, um, you know, remote meetings, the televising of that, the, um, the conveyance of that. And we'll get into more of that when we get to Oshkosh Media. But it really is a cooperative effort. Um, and, and I think they're doing a very good job. So in terms of information technology from a financial perspective, again, the only real, um, modifications to the budgets numerically, we have a little bit of an uptick because of elections and postage. We had some things with, uh, the, the software that we talked about, DocuSign, WebEx, InfoSec training. And then also we had to clean up some licensure's issues from a security perspective when we had, when we took a look at some unsupported software. Otherwise, our budgets really are pretty static again. I don't know if the council has any questions on any of the capital outlay stuff that, that Tony prepared. That's on page forty-six. He's prepared to talk about, you know, what that is and what it's designed for organizationally, if you'd like him to go into that.
Uh, before you jump into that, just on page forty-five, um, just curious, uh, it looks like a, I don't know, thirty thousand dollar, uh, projected increase for 2020 on postage and shipping from IT.
Right. That was through the, um, mail-in ballots, the, the initiative that was approved by council?
Okay, it was placed in IT and not the clerk's budget.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anything with the capital outlay? Any, anything you want to, it's not, it's not too expansive and it's not too exciting. So if the council wants to go forward, I could keep doing that.
Um, is that MSA storage? Is that, um, that's not the video cam storage, right? Cause that's under police budget. Is that right?
Um, no, that's network storage.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Tony. The next budget is, uh, right after that, page forty-seven and forty-eight, it's insurance. And risk management is, um, a subset of, uh, HR. And Paul Greening is our, our safety and risk management officer. So he works very closely with Michelle, um, on these budgets, insurance. And then later on, we'll get to the worker comp and safety budget. So, um, this is an area where we're, we're experiencing some increases. And really, um, the process that we undertake when we take a look at what our insurance is going to be from year to year, from a, uh, workers' compensation perspective, from building and contents and from comprehensive liability, and now including cyber liability. We, we try to get the information with this, it, when we, when we go out to bid, those groups want to have as complete of information as we can. And oftentimes they won't want to give us an accurate quote until we get to the end of the calendar year, so they can capture all the risk. So when we establish these budgets, sometimes we're doing it with a, with the best estimate that we can. So when you take a look at our budget and you see some of the original allocations and then what was ending up being expended, that's why some of the numbers aren't correlating quite as closely as some of the traditional budgets that you look at. So we're having a little bit of an uptick, we believe, and we have these things out to bid and we're shopping them. But we're going to have a little bit of an uptick, uh, certainly in workers' compensation. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to that budget specifically. I know city manager Roloff mentioned it at, you know, in his initial, uh, summary. Um, but we have some very significant worker comp issues without getting into the specifics of each individual employee. So we've got an uptick there. We've got an uptick also in, um, building and contents. We believe that, you know, property values are going to be increasing a little bit. So that's part of the factoring that was put into that, um, process too. We have, uh, uh, comprehensive liability is an area where we, we budget for our underground storage tanks. And we're going, we're working on some significant changes there. I think the council might recall at the last bu- at the last council meeting, you approved, uh, um, the, uh, removal and replacement of some underground storage tanks over in the transit area. And, um, so we have a, a premium that's staggered there. It's like a three-year premium, so it isn't, um, provided every year. So there's a little bit of an uptick there because it's the year we need to pay for that premium. But, but that's really it, um, in terms of a summary of insurance. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have, if you'd like any more detail.
Just a quick question, John, then. So on page forty-seven, um, this, this reflects those premiums that we pay for workers' comp? Or is that separate in the other section you're going to be covering?
Well, as, as city manager Roloff talked about early, uh, on, we are self-funded for our workers' comp. So what we do is we pay for the workers' comp ourselves and we have a separate, um, insurance component that's called stop loss. So we pay for the claims all the way up to a certain level. And then when it gets to be at a catastrophic level, then we have this insurance to protect the city. So that's really how it's set up.
But this is just the general funds portion. So we will get into the workers' comp fund itself. That's another fund that, that we'll be looking at. But this is, this is exclusively general fund. So utilities and other funds, other special funds, uh, that's not reflected, uh, here in their budget impact.
Right.
But it's going up, what, uh, hundred, almost, uh, hundred sixty-five thousand dollars just to the general fund. That's pretty substantial when you take a look at percentage-wise, it's like a thirty or twenty percent increase.
Yeah, not exactly an uptick, a little more than an uptick.
It's a loud uptick, yes. I totally agree.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the major driver is, is city manager Roloff talked about was worker compensation. And we certainly, you know, emphasize safety and try to do everything we can. But sometimes there's some circumstances that are beyond our control. So, um, we hate to have that happen, but it's, it's part of the cost of doing business.
Was that spread across multiple departments?
Yes, the way that it works and, and certainly, you know, Russ can chip in here as he wishes. But the way that we do it budgetarily is, um, we charge all the budgets, or Russ does in finance, uh, a, a percentage. And then all that revenue is pooled back. And then we use that money to pay for the costs associated with this, to try to do it equitably. And then Russ also has to, you know, balance all the complexity associated with, um, general fund, non-general fund, uh, different types of budgets. So, um, so that's part of the process itself. And Russ, do you want to add to that at all?
Yeah, I was, I was trying to jump in. What you're seeing here in this insurance fund is, is the cost for all employees within the general fund. It doesn't get allocated out by police or fire or planning or finance or whatever. So this is all a general fund portion just in, uh, basically the insurance department. Uh, and I think Fitz is, um, talking about is we also have, uh, a, a workers' compensation fund that has the total cost. But what you're seeing on page forty-eight is just the general fund portion of employee cost, uh, for worker. But what you're seeing on page forty-eight is just the general fund portion of employee cost, uh, for worker compensation.
And as Russ said, there'll be a little more detail once we get to the worker comp fund about that specific fund. Any additional questions about insurance? I should also mention, um, our health insurance is in a separate benefit fund too that we'll talk about. So it's not included in this one. Okay, the next budget is the next page right after that, it's forty-nine, it's facilities maintenance. And again, that's an area that's in, uh, John Urban's General Services Division. That, uh, area has been, uh, you know, critical during this COVID circumstance. We've had, you know, uh, much ramped up, uh, cleaning. We've had separate contracted services that I know the council's aware of, to make sure that we tried to keep the workplace as clean as possible. The interface between facilities maintenance, and also I mentioned Paul Greeninger, our safety and risk management officer, and also Michelle Benke in HR, to try to support the supervisors, the employees, to make sure that they're feeling safe, and to also give them, um, an assurance that, um, they're dealing with the situation safely. I think that's been really invaluable. The departments in, and I think, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about how the supervisors are dealing with all this too. And not to get too far away from facilities maintenance, but I think they're really managing this in a, in a extremely, uh, efficient way and a very considerate way. You talked about remote work, um, but that's just one piece of it. Remote work, um, using information technology to try to help facilitate that, working with the facilities to make sure that they're safe, you know, reconstructing different options for people, whether it be, you know, from conference rooms to different locations, to social distancing, not only organizationally, but also with boards, commissions, council meetings. You know, the interactivity between those divisions, I think, has really been exceptional. And, um, our facilities folks have been on the front lines of that. Um, and I know I, I very much appreciate the, our employees recognizing them, you know, uh, they just do little things, I think, to say, hey, thanks for looking out for us. And, you know, I think that, um, it, that's just one little insight that I can share with you that has, has been another positive thing that has taken place through this, um, emergency. They also work, and John works from a facilities perspective with other areas that he's not directly responsible for. You'll see an enhancement in here that was put forward by, um, fire. So all, there's sometimes limited resources in some of the external departments. And John, Terry, our lead worker, Terry Smith, the staff people that we have, you know, they're always willing to do what they can to help others, um, although it's not technically in their job description. Not to mention, um, some of the external facilities that we have, like, and we'll talk about those specific budgets a little bit later, with the convention center, the Grand Opera House, um, our storage facility on Sawyer. So it's a big job, but I think, um, I think they've done a really good job this year too.
A quick question, John, as the, um, uh, twenty twenty-one goals for facilities maintenance has that coordinating the renovation of the former court area at the safety building for PD offices. So, so renovation is in, um, facilities maintenance and not under, uh, another, I, I don't know, I guess I'm just kind of curious about that. Is that, uh, if you can go into?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about that. So for facilities maintenance, I mean, they're not, they're involved in buildings, grounds, and also they reconstruct areas of our organization too, from a facilities perspective. They'll do, um, remodeling, minor remodeling, minor electrical plumbing. We utilize our folks internally. We work quite a bit in transportation with, uh, with Dan Kussman and Jim Collins, and some of the electricians that we have that are signal mechanics, and they help us. It's a way for us to keep the costs down and, um, they, sometimes.
It's not in your operating budget though, Fitz.
What's that?
It's not in your operating budget, except the, the, uh, sweat equity that, that Terry Smith and his folks put in.
It is, there are some general things that are.
It's seen in the budget.
Yep.
So it is in the capital budget.
So I don't know if that answers your question, Lori.
The regular time, uh, mayor that, uh, Terry Smith, excuse me, and his staff, that's in the facility maintenance budget. But if there's any, uh, capital cost with, uh, material supplies, that's, that's usually in a capital budget. It's not reflected in this facility maintenance division budget.
Unless it's a minor item. So any other questions about facilities maintenance? Okay, the next budget that we have is Oshkosh Media, and that's on page fifty-five. So I just talked about that before a little bit. Um, you know, I think Oshkosh Media has been, uh, you know, invaluable in a, in a variety of different ways. And I think the council sees that in boards and commissions and externally, but also internally, they may not be aware that, um, City Manager Roloff speaks to the employees, that he was speaking to them on a weekly basis during this emergency. And we do virtual meetings, a quarterly, where City Manager Roloff keeps the employees updated. Um, because, you know, they are very much, um, engaged, and we appreciate that. And they are ambassadors to the community, and they have a lot of people who are neighbors that come to them and say, hey, what's going on with the city? And, um, we know that, we want them to be, feel like the partners in everything we do. Certainly, everybody has their own mission in their, each individual department. But I think it's important, and certainly City Manager Roloff believes it's important, when we're dealing in an emergent situation that we're communicating on a regular basis. So they've also facilitated all those sorts of activities internally, as well as boards and commissions, external activity, and all the other programming we have on W O C T, um, and, uh, online. Um, and also partnered with information technology quite a bit in order to be able to make all this happen this year. Um, one thing that I would like to point out that's on page fifty-five, um, we have an initiative where we're trying to, evaluate our presence from a social media perspective, and we move forward with, with some software that, um, that, that's described here a little bit, and it's reflected in the budget and the line items. It's called Archive Social. And, um, you can see the description there, it's just an online tool that, um, allows us to, um, have a convenient dashboard to take a look at all kinds of different things that might be trending from a social media perspective. So I think that's something we're very much looking forward to, and, and John, if you want to expand on that, you certainly can.
I, I'd actually defer to Jake on that one, because I know he was more instrumental in bringing that archive, uh, social forth, and, uh, with the benefits it has and what it provides to us as a city. If Jake, if you've got a minute?
Sure, yeah, so, um, this is something we have been looking at for a couple of years, actually. And there are other municipalities throughout the state that, and the country that use this. But, um, it did a couple of things. Number one, um, it provides legal compliance, as many of you probably are aware. Um, social media platforms that are affiliated with the city, official, uh, official, social media platforms from the city are technically public record. Um, and so in order to facilitate, uh, legal compliance and to just make it easier on staff, should we ever be served with any kind of freedom, freedom of information request, or any kind of request from social media, um, this archive social software, basically, it, uh, retroactively archived every social media platform that we have attached to it with the city, which includes fire, police, parks, obviously, Oshkosh Media. Any social media platform that's affiliated with the city has now been added to this platform and, um, has been retroactively archived. So we now have a working archive, uh, of all of our social media platforms, which we did not have before. And, um, the dashboard also provides some tools that make it easier to search for trends by keyword and, uh, other information with social media. So, um, communication coordinator, Andy Radek, uh, used this in his previous, uh, uh, position at another municipality and is familiar with it. And, um, it was nice to, uh, to get his insight on it before we went forward with it, and, uh, we've been using it. Um, we check it out, uh, regularly down here in Oshkosh Media. A lot of the other departments probably are just, you know, it just kind of runs in the background. It doesn't affect their social media presence or their operation in any way. But, um, it's good to have, obviously, from a legal standpoint. But then there's also some other tools that allows us to easily search our, our social media platforms by keyword or by trends or things of that nature.
So, um, is the, it, it's searchable, um, based on a trend, like, keyword topic? Is it available? Are those trends, uh, reports available to the public? Or is this only internally and then limited to the social media platforms, correct? Not necessarily, um, our website specifically, is that right?
That's correct, Mary, yes. It's not, it does not archive, uh, website activity, it's just social media platforms. And, um, as far as whether internal versus external, it's, we're only using it internally right now. Um, we haven't probably really dove into it, we've only had it in place for a couple of months. But, uh, it does provide the ability to search. So say someone said, you know, I saw this post about masks. You could, you could keywords, you could keyword search mask, or keyword search any word, or it would pop up the, the, all the posts, uh, in a certain timeframe that you designated for. And it just makes it easier to search. I know, uh, IT, uh, had said that we, we have been using some, like, emails that came in to admin accounts, uh, to kind of archive things in the past, and that's, that is a way to do it. But this makes it much easier to, to find things and see things. So it's just, it streamlines staff time, makes it a lot easier on us if we do get a request in some way. And so far, so good.
And I think it also allows us to be proactive. When we see some things that are trending, we can say, okay, we need to get a, another message out regarding that. You know, Jake used the idea of masks, obviously, that's a trendy trend. Uh, so if we, if we see something, say, well, it looks like this is kind of the, the gist of what we need to get better information out on, so.
Would that be shared with council then, those trend reports?
Not necessarily, it's just more of an internal thing. But you'll see it when we, you'll obviously see it as we start doing some things in social media. We'll be basing some decisions based on that information. So, uh, it'll really be more about, well, we need to get more information about this, we need to be more proactive. Every once in a while, council will ask about something, I'll ask about something, and then staff will, will work on that. This will allow staff to, uh, they themselves look at things and say, this is trending, and we think we need to pick up the pace on, on this communication. It's a pretty good tool. Mayor Vruwink in, in Wisconsin Rapids, uh, that's where Andy was at, uh, previously before rejoining us. And, uh, uh, former Mayor Vruwink really spoke highly of it when I chatted with him about it as well. So it was exciting to see, uh, and Jake had been looking for this for, you know, for a couple of years. So when Andy got on board, it's like, okay, come on, we got to go sell this to Mark. And it was a pretty easy sell, once they, once they showed what a effective tool it was.
Yeah, I think it's just another tool for us, just like we use Polco, just like we're use this to make sure that we're sensing the community and we're being responsive, and then we can, you know, modify our public information strategies to, to make sure that we're getting the proper information out to folks. So that's really all I have in terms of, uh, Oshkosh Media, um, unless you have any additional questions. And I would just make note, because you know, I, you know how I like to be brief and don't want to ramble on at all. We're at the halfway point for administrative services, we're just a little past eleven. We have twelve budgets, we already went through six, we have six to go, and they're, hopefully, we'll get you out of here early so you can have your virtual lunch. And I think City Manager Roloff is buying, that's what he told me anyway.
So. Buy for everybody in the room.
Okay, all right.
Pretty lonely here.
Yes. So the next budget is right after that, it's on page eighty-four, it's the Police and Fire Commission budget. That's a pretty, uh, pretty basic budget, it's really kind of an in-and-out budget. Michelle Benke works with the chiefs, talks to them about any potential retirements that they know of on the horizon. Certainly, we, uh, as open as folks are willing to be with us and give us a heads up in terms of what their plans are, we try to utilize that, um, but we can't pressure them into telling us, of course, so. But we don't see, um, as I might have mentioned in HR, I think with some of the issues associated with COVID, I didn't talk about the turnover, um, KPI, but we experienced some. Traditionally with the city, a lot of people retire in the first quarter, first or second quarter. And if you look at that KPI, you'll see that reflected. Well, this last quarter, first and second quarter of this past year, it wasn't quite as pronounced. And I think that's because of COVID, people are just a little more conservative, you know, their, their family activities might be, you know, affected. So I think they're being a little more cautious. So this budget is really just status quo. Any questions? Okay, the next budget that we have, we're moving towards the back of the book now, is, um, three seventeen. So that's Grand Opera House. And I think, um, as we talked about, um, recently, council may recall, you know, we have a new agreement with, uh, Grand Opera House. And, um, I think they're really coming on board in terms of how we like to manage our facilities from a planned perspective. You know, for planning properly, we can budget properly, and I think they get that now. I think we, we had the template that we had with, uh, Convention Center that worked out really well, and we, we showed them why we set it up that way. And I think the folks that we worked with, with the Grand Opera House, um, board, um, liked it. And, you know, they think it can help them too. So they adopted that, they incorporated some of those concepts into the contract that the council approved this year. So there really isn't a significant amount of change in this budget either. It's, it's pretty status quo. We, uh, I thought you may want to know about the sign. So because we're running a little bit ahead of schedule, I can just say that, you know, that still processes on hold. And, um, community development is working with the Wisconsin Historical Society on the donated sign that they had planned. But I don't have anything that I can really report.
The holdup isn't, the holdup isn't local, it's with the, uh, State Historical Society. So Joe is, uh, maneuvering his way through that, uh, through that bureaucracy with, uh, the help of the, um, uh, the help of staff and community development.
So that's really it for the Grand Opera House, unless you have any questions. Okay, the next budget is right after that, the Convention Center. And this is the one that City Manager Roloff talked about initially. This is the one where there's some significant, um, budget concerns that, you know, we have based on the hotel motel room tax. So I think, um, rather than me trying to get into the specifics of this or John, I think we'd be best served by, you know, letting Russ just talk about this, uh, from his perspective.
Gee, thanks.
And I can fill in Russ too, just, if, if you just want to get started.
Sure, um, I think what I'd like you to do is take a look at page three twenty-three. So I think this is, uh, the one that kind of drives the main concern with, uh, So I think this is uh, the one that kind of drives the main concern with uh, with where things are at. Um, you know, basically what we have is a debt service that is coming in and, and most of that's driven by room tax dollars. Um, so we went through and it's not part of the budget document, but we went through and analyzed where room tax collections are coming in uh, for the city. Um, and did talk to folks at uh, Visit Oshkosh to make sure our assumptions are relatively accurate. For 2021, uh, we're basically projecting a room tax revenue to start out the year at about 30% of 2019 or pre-COVID um, room tax collections. And we kind of ramped it up just a little bit, but we're still nowhere near uh, room tax collections for 2021 that we saw in 2019. Um, so we're looking at the 2019, if you look at the bottom, almost 1.8 million dollars in room tax collection that occurred in 2019. For 2021, we're looking at about 831,000 dollars uh, for the year. That's, you know, but just based on historical trends, but also doing a percentage of where we're at. Um, and then some of that is for money that gets sent out to um, Visit Oshkosh. Um, 60% goes to the Convention Bureau. Um, 20% is for debt and 20% is used for other purposes. So that's pretty much where we're at. Um, looking at 2021, when you go through our numbers, um, we, we actually will not get enough revenue to meet our debt obligations, but we have adequate fund balance available to cover our debt obligations. Uh, so that's a, a bad story in a relatively short amount of time. Mark, I don't know if you wanted to chime in anymore on that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, the, the, the challenge is that, and I mentioned it briefly, um, the debt service is a fixed obligation that we have to take care of. And then the other uh, the 20% for other purposes, uh, one is the payment to the grant. Uh, you recall, we froze the grant's payment at 180,000. And uh, the way we put it into the agreement was that we would not, we would go to 2 million, we would go to 200,000 for their payment when the room tax collected on an annual basis uh, was a total of 2 million dollars. So right now, or last year, we were at 1.8 million, temper, or 10% of that is about 180,000. So we said, we can't commit to any increase for the grant until we get to 2 million dollars and then it would be 10%. It's not formula driven that they get 10%, but that was kind of the, the, the fund isn't going to be able to help them beyond that. Um, so that's going to be a challenge for us. The other um, fixed costs are our obligations under the agreement with uh, the Best Western uh, Hotel. And uh, it's maintenance issues such as, you know, clearing the sidewalks and other repairs that may come up that according to the contractor, our responsibility versus uh, their responsibility. So there are going to be challenges there. I will say a portion of the special events coordinator position is also funded there. Um, but it's a, it's a cost that we have. Um, and even though special events have scaled back, there's still coordinating issues, still questions. Um, people have still tried to run special events. So the special events coordinator has been working with those people, even if the answer ultimately is no, you can't do your special event or you have to completely modify it. So uh, Ms. Snell's still been busy uh, even when the answer is no. So those are the challenges and I think the fund balance in there, we did borrow for some uh, improvements to the fund. And so we're kind of, kind of float that cash for a while, but that is not a long-term strategy. We're going to have to replenish those funds because we borrowed that from the state trust fund a few years ago. And um, we have an obligation to get those improvements done. So uh, that won't go away. We're hoping that the fund recovers, but I think Russ and his staff's um, estimate with uh, only estimating 831,000 reflects a very slow recovery. Um, and until we have better ideas about uh, events coming back, um, whether it's EAA or conventions, um, there's going to be a new normal that I don't think anybody is uh, convinced is uh, is reliable yet. So we still have to be very cautious about our revenue estimates.
So I think those guys, just, I was just going to add, I think those guys described it very well. And I would just add to what um, City Manager Roloff said. You know, we've been in communication with the CBB and talked to them about our methodology and the thought process along the lines of what Mark was saying. And I think they're comfortable with that, with our, with our planning. I would just say it that way. Wouldn't you say, Mark and Russ?
Yeah, I think, we have obligations to the community foundation and we're going to be talking with them about things we can do. Fortunately, there was a fund that we had to set up with our loan from them that we uh, deposit funds for capital replacement there as well. And uh, and we've got a good fund balance there. So we're going to, to work off of those fund balances um, in the short run. But again, it, it's not sustainable in the long run. Russ, are you going to add something?
Yeah, just to clarify, again, in, in 2019, we had about just over 1.8 million dollars in room tax revenue collected. Our estimate right now for 2020, and again, this is still an estimate because uh, we know what we're at through August. Uh, but we're estimating total revenue collected through 2020 of 694,500 dollars. So that gives you um, magnitude of what's happening with room tax collection. Uh, the last numbers we got, we uh, we're running about 25% of 2019. And so we're estimating 30% collection for the remainder of 2020. Like I stated earlier, we're starting out 2021 at 30% and we're assuming uh, by the end of 2021 that we could be running around 60% collection from what uh, we saw in 2019. Just to kind of put this in perspective.
How long is the contract, our obligation uh, with the uh, uh, premier Best Western?
That's through 2030. We had up, re-upped that a few years ago. And uh, so our obligation will continue. Um, they get a percent, I mean, they, they give us a percentage and that goes into this fund. Um, but uh, you know, part of their business model was premised on uh, them getting business. And so they're hurting as well as us. So there's a lot of hurt going around and we're all just kind of uh, weathering this storm. Um, also has implications on the TIF. Um, and uh, and I'm going to be meeting with the investors uh, within the next few weeks to discuss uh, that impact as well. This isn't great news. Uh, the only solace I can give you is while we uh, have talked about, you know, wanting to uh, get a broader tax base to fund things in the city. Um, this is one of those times where actually we're kind of benefiting from having limited because property tax is our primary source of revenue. Uh, you know, communities that rely on room tax to fund general operations or sales tax to fund general operations and retail sales are down. Um, they're really hurting. Communities throughout the country that are reliant on sales taxes are, are having a tough time. We don't have that problem, which is a, a good non-problem. Uh, but it still uh, shows you, this is just a microcosm of what's going on elsewhere in the country. Fortunately, it's only one fund. And this is something that we're um, actively monitoring because we know the impact. And I know Ms. Albright at the Convention and Visitors Bureau has had to make some really tough decisions to uh, to keep uh, to keep their operations going.
Okay.
Unless you want me to start handing out tissues instead of uh, lunch. Uh, this is a tough one, but
It is.
We're, we're watching it and that's really all we can tell you right now. But when Russ reports that we're a million one down from the prior year, you, you, you can't ignore that.
Okay, any other questions about the Convention Center? Alright, the next budget is right after that. It's on page 324. It's the, it's the parking ramp. And this is a very basic budget also. Um, there's really not much um, change associated with this budget at all. Uh, we had a little damage that we needed to repair, but that's really the only uptick.
This is funded by uh, per night charge assessed at the Best Western and it goes directly into this fund for parking ramp improvement. So uh, uh, it wasn't too busy for a while, so we got a few little improvements done. Um, so uh, but this is something that uh, the fund balance is good and uh, we have a list of projects that need to get done and we do those. Uh, this one is doing very well. So we're happy to, even though the, the revenue this year isn't the greatest. Um, they're doing um, uh, the fund balance itself. Uh, we can live off of that.
So we don't have a lot of um, project schedule going forward, as Mark said too. We have kind of a a Gantt chart where we got it out, what we're doing, when we're doing it, how much it's going to cost. So we're kind of in a lull and we're fortunate for that. I, I see, Mike, you had a question?
Yeah, so that, that revenue drop from 2020 to 2021, that's a function of assuming lower occupancy at the
Correct. Uh, an estimate based on what we think we might see in 2021. Again, kind of using that 30, 40% for the entire year. Um, it kind of held its own for, for the most part in 2020, but I'm not, I don't want to count on that for 2021.
That seems smart. Thank you.
Yeah, that's really all, all we have for that budget unless there's any other additional questions. The next budget would be on page 361. And that's the Internal Service Benefit Fund. So what we use that budget for, and I'll give you a chance to get to that one, is, you know, I mentioned earlier that we separately benefit in a, in a different area rather than insurance for our health insurance and our dental insurance. So this is the, this is the placeholder for that. And for some council members that may not be familiar, the city of Oshkosh really has, before I got here, was self-funded for the longest time. And, and for a good portion of the time that I've been here, we've been self-funded. And actually, we would probably like to become self-funded again at some point because the model that we have with the uh, Three Waves Clinic really lends itself to um, being a little more nimble, giving us a little more flexibility if we can be self-funded. Um, it gives us more flexibility budgetarily. So, but for the time being, because we have been so successful with the use of our clinic and because of our employees' efforts, we've been, we've been fully insured for a little while, which means we just purchased insurance from an outside vendor rather than, than funding the costs ourself like we do with workers comp in a, in a separate stop loss. So this budget reflects that. It also reflects it, if you take a look at it in the, in that first page on 361, a fund balance, one of the things that the council was very clear on when we forewent away from self-funding to fully insured insurance programming is that they wanted us to, to keep that fund balance separate and kind of sacrosanct. So that's what it is. That's what that large number there is for. And if we were to ever go back into the self-funded health insurance business, that's what that money is set aside for in order for us to facilitate at least three months of claims. That's, that's kind of the industry standard. So that's what the, that's what those budget numbers really kind of represent there. I mentioned dentals in here too and you know, we're doing pretty good. I reported on that. Um, you know, at a, at a workshop, I think for you. Um, it's, it's really doing better than we thought it was going to when we initially implemented it. You might see some upticks also in the, on 362, the, in, in several line items. The reason for those upticks, just to proactively tell you, is um, our prior fully insured vendor covered the costs for our clinic expenses and also our health risk assessments. But now our current vendor, we have Robin, um, preferred to have it at a different arrangement. They preferred to give us a, a discount rather than paying for our costs. It was an issue that they and their management staff just felt more comfortable structuring. So you'll see that there are some additional monies that are budgeted there. And those are to offset those costs that we are responsible for now rather than our prior vendor. So that's really all that, that represents.
The departments pay into that.
Want to say something, Mark?
Well, the departments pay in to fund that, that part. So it's in, it's in all the departmental budgets. Um, because we want to make sure that that fund balance doesn't get depleted. Um, and so we're uh, we can't, that's not a charge that we can uh, assess to employees. Uh, that wouldn't be appropriate. But it is, we do charge it to the departmental budgets so that we can cover those uh, overhead costs associated with administering our health insurance program.
Kind of like we talked about when we were talking about other insurance program here earlier, the methodology that finance uses.
How does that reflect with the 7% increase anticipated for health insurance then?
That's all in the operating budgets. That wouldn't be reflected here.
Okay.
So like my budget, yeah, my budget's simple. It's Diane and me. So it goes up. Uh, that 7% is reflected in, in our individual budgets.
Yeah.
So it's 7% plus this amount because of going to Robin.
Right, but that was in 2020. So that was already reflected in our 2020 estimates there.
Exactly. Alright, any other questions about this budget? Okay, and the next budget's on the next page, 363. It's our worker compensation fund. And performance report. Talked a little bit about that. Um, you can see that our fund balance is being reduced there. You know, if you take a look at 363, City Manager Roloff talked a little bit about it at the beginning. I alluded to it. We had some pretty significant worker comp injuries with our employees. And you know, without getting into them personally, you know, because they were so newsworthy, I'm sure you're aware of some of them. Um, but workers comp is a very uh, difficult budget to project. And the reason it's difficult to project is you can't predict those injuries. We have a pretty robust safety program. But also claims associated with workers comp can be filed years after the, the incident may take place. So when those, if, when and if those claims are filed, you know, they could hit a budget that is much later than when the actual accident occurred. So we've been fortunate. I think Paul Greeninger does a really nice job and Michelle with this. Um, but there's been, there's some, there's some increases in some of the line items here to replenish that fund. There's also um, an increase in one of the light item, items here where we have a repricer that we run our claims through. That also gives us a discount. And because of the volume of claims, the increase, there's an increase in cost. But there's also been a corresponding um, increase in the, in the um, revenue that's been able to be recovered through their efforts. But budgetary, budgetarily, the numbers look a little bit bigger. There's also um, an increase in the area of stop loss for workers compensation. And we talked about that earlier, how that works. I think City Manager Roloff and I described it, you know, we're self-funded to a certain level, but then when it gets to a catastrophic level, we have separate insurance called Stop Loss that kicks in. It kind of protects the city from those catastrophic costs. And because, and ordinarily, when And because, and ordinarily, when, when we go to an insurance company and we ask them to give us a quote for Stop Loss, they'll take a look at our utilization and our claims history. And when you have a, a larger claims history, they view that as a, a more risky element. And then they, they, uh, correspondingly increase the stop loss costs. So we have built that into the budget, but we're also shopping that and taking a look at different options.
But we have to keep an eye on that fund balance. That's a, that's a big concern.
Absolutely.
So that's where some fund balance issues may come up. Um, if, to the degree we need to, uh, to help this fund. Russ, you got anything to add to that? Because that's obviously a big, a big issue. Um, I don't think it says anything. It just says we've had a couple, we've had a bad run. Um, I would, we'd be better off with a, a large, one single large claim that would go to Stop Loss. That's not the case. We have, we have multiple small ones. So those small ones, we pay every single one of those claims. If we have one claim for a million and a half dollars, uh, we pay the first five hundred. Stop Loss pays the other million. If we have three claims of four hundred ninety nine thousand dollars, we pay four hundred ninety nine thousand times three. So we practically pay a million and a half that way. And you can see, just looking at that line item, which I don't like getting into line item detail, uh, but you can just see that special services line item, that, those are the claims under, um, under five hundred thousand dollars. And you can see that we, we've essentially doubled it from nineteen to projected two thousand twenty. And that's just one of those things we have to, we have to keep an eye on this, uh, so our fund balance is okay.
Are some of those, uh, departments, is there a trend or, uh, a repeat in departments? Which departments those claims are coming out of?
I don't believe so, but I think Paul Greeninger is on. Paul, you want to talk about that? Do you see a trend in the individual departments? Paul, you there?
I don't think, I think the answer, the short answer to your question is no, because the safety committee takes a look at all of these. We have a safety committee that reviews all of our workers' comp claims to identify, uh, are they, uh, are they preventable and things like that? So the masked man that says Michelle Benke is actually Paul Greeninger. So, uh, uh, he must have had a technical issue. So Michelle, uh, Michelle bailed him out and put Paul in her office. So thank you, Michelle. Greeny, what do you got?
Um, I didn't have my, I don't have a webcam in my office last night. I had to run in here. Um, I would say, I think the original question was, is there a trend?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say
Departmentally.
Not, not especially. Um, the, the, the problem this year was we had knees, backs and shoulders surgeries. And in some cases, the surgeries were more than one on the same body part. So, um, and then today I found out somebody's going to have surgery. It's just twenty twenty can go away anytime soon. Um, somebody's going to have another surgery. So it's, it's just, there is no trend really.
I guess the question is, are there like repeat departments over the years, uh, that, that these larger claims are coming out of?
Our high risks are always public safety and public works. Those are traditional.
I would say historically, you know, before we went to automated refuse, we had a, you know, that was a huge drop, and I think Paul was here when that took place. Um, but I can't recall any really precipitous, you know, spikes or changes other than, you know, when we, when we took sanitation and went to automated, I think that we saw a significant drop there. Paul, you can chip in with whatever you think.
Yeah, that's true. It went way down and it remains that way. So that, that's a good thing.
So we do track trends, uh, in terms of our safety committee takes a look at those things. Paul convenes a safety committee. How often do you do it?
Uh, we do it once a quarter. And then just recently, um, one of my counterparts up in Appleton took a look at, um, our, um, he kind of did benchmarking with this, uh, uh, the city of Oshkosh. Uh, there's like four or five other ones similar to our size. And the good news is, as bad as we are, we aren't as bad as the other folks, which it was kind of hard to believe because again, we had a, we had a rough year this year. But, um, all in all, this was a very uncommon year. I mean, we were, we were pretty consistent for a while, but it caught up with us. So.
Any, any other questions for Paul or workers' comp related things? I just had one more thing I wanted to share. Um, I just wanted to make it clear that, that Minnesota Vikings mask is not a sanctioned mask in the city of Oshkosh. Paul knows that, so we'll have to talk about that when we get back to the office.
And I never thought Kirk Cuzzin was the answer. I'm going to be on record for that.
So with that, that's, that's administrative services. Uh, if you have any other general questions, you know, you can ask me anytime or give me a call. I'm happy to try to answer. Anything else? And appreciate the council's help always and good luck with this process.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Fitz.
Sure. And again, I just thought I'd point out too, that we are ahead of schedule. Good luck.
All right. So, uh, wow, we are way ahead of schedule, aren't we, if we finish up with administrative services?
Yes. Um, I had, uh, anticipating this, I, uh, had contacted the city attorney to see if she wanted to go first and then we could end still at noon, but then maybe give ourselves an hour rather than just, uh, and start the lunch hour at noon rather than earlier than that. Um, any thoughts on that?
I guess anybody opposed, uh, Councilmember Erickson, uh, unmute.
I was just giving a thumbs up.
Oh, okay. Sure. So city attorney ready? All right.
Lynn, are you there? Sorry if you contacted me. I didn't see it. I've been actually working in the background here.
Oh, I, I texted you, Lynn.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I've been working, so I've been, uh, listening, but I can, I can jump in. I'm ready to go. I was going to have Kayla sit in, but we're okay. I, I just was going to have her sit in to, uh, experience the budget process, but we're okay. So, um, do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, why don't you? Lynn, if you could start with the page you're on.
I am on page twenty three. And as you know, the city attorney's office provides legal services. I'm sorry, I'm looking at one screen, two screens. So if I'm not looking at you, it's because I'm reading off my notes on the other screen. The city attorney's office provides legal services for the city, the council, the boards and commissions, divisions and departments for the city. We have three full-time attorneys and an administrative assistant. We provide the majority of our, uh, legal services in-house, but we do engage outside counsel when necessary for, um, environmental issues or other specialty issues, um, utilities, we did some this year, and development agreements, um, and sometimes when we have conflicts of interest. Uh, we had a special prosecutor in one case because we had a conflict of interest with the attorneys in our, um, office. And sometimes we, um, engage outside counsel when necessary due to time or other constraints. Um, with regard to litigation, we work closely with the insurance adjusters and defense counsel on claims against the city. And we also provide all prosecution services for the city for ordinance violations. Um, and I'll get to that. That's one of our, uh, KPIs in the budget document. We also provide other in-house litigation services in connection with foreclosures, with some routine bankruptcy matters and nuisance abatement actions primarily. Um, with regard to the budget, we made no significant changes to our budget. And hang on, um, we're basically holding steady. We're, we planned actually to underspend in several of the categories this year. For instance, like conferences, um, due to COVID, we didn't travel. But we're holding those steady. We're a pretty tight budget anyway, um, which the city manager always appreciates. So, uh, we're not planning to reduce it for next year because we're hoping to get back to a little more normal next year. Um, with regard to our KPIs, the one thing I would note is, um, with the prosecution ones, they're a little bit unusual this year. In the fall of two thousand nineteen, our prosecutor was out for a couple of months. At the same time, we actually lost our administrative assistant. She, um, decided to stay home. And so while we had about a two-month period where, um, oh, I see Kayla actually has jumped on with us. Good. Um, we had about a two-month period where before Kayla started with us, where we had an outside prosecutor and we were not tracking during that period of time. So we had that gap. And then beginning in March of this year with COVID, the, um, court, uh, closures and delays had an impact on our prosecution numbers. So you'll notice that it just looks a little different this year. Um, aside from the KPIs, I, I noted, we already, um, we hired and trained a new administrative assistant, Kayla Wesner, and she's on with us now today. Kayla's been able to pick up things very, very quickly, which has been a great help to us. She's worked with Deputy City Attorney Dave Praska on, um, developing a system through the city's evolve system to track easements and other types of documents. Improved our efficiency and, um, she's just done a great job getting that up and running and working with the other departments to do that. She's also working with Attorney Van den Hogen to improve our efficiency in relation to pressure prosecution services. She is, um, freeing up some of Attorney Van den Hogen's time so that, uh, Amy can take on some additional just general municipal work and get some of that experience. So we're really happy to have Kayla on board. Um, Kayla, I don't know if you want to jump in and say anything, jump on in because I got to scroll down to another page here, but.
I don't have anything to add at this time right now. Everything that you're saying sounds great so far.
All right. Thanks. Um, as noted, already COVID had an effect on our office. Um, we kept most of our normal workload actually and, um, added the re, the support for COVID on top of that. So with regard to COVID, we drafted the emergency declarations and amendments to the council and meeting rules. We worked with community development on, um, the temporary outdoor seating ordinances and with the city clerk's office on, um, abatement of liquor license fees this year. And again, with community development on, um, TIF funding and TIF amendments to provide funding for businesses. And, um, we drafted some emerg, agreements that were needed for our emergency response personnel and provided, um, review of legislation and court opinions that have come down in connection with the city. Um, with regard to our more normal, uh, workload, we worked on various ordinance updates. Um, some highlights of those were the vaping ordinance reflecting the indoor air act. Um, working with finance and community development on the changes to room tax and updating all our forms in relation to that. John Fitzpatrick, if you could mute, um, I'm getting some feedback and I, you're, thank you. Um, we updated fire prevention codes, our public records ordinance, some elect and we did a whole bunch of general code updates, which you much remember from the past couple of, uh, agendas. So we've been, uh, making use of our, our time while COVID's been, uh, any, any spare time it's granted us. So. Uh, one of our focuses in the past couple of years has been on training. We updated the council manual and we trained some great fabulous members this year. So, um, we did a manual and did initial training with the DEI committee. And we had started, um, updated training with the BZA. We actually put that on hold because if you remember on your last agenda, we had updates to the BZA ordinances. So now we'll pick that training back up again because, um, as we started the training, we discovered those issues. And so we're going to go back and finish now updating their manual and completing training. We're also working on an update to the plan commission manual right now. Um, continue to work with other departments and divisions. Um, we review contracts and agreements and more contracts and more agreements. We do a lot of that. Some highlights on that was, um, the Titanic agreement with the museum for this year and the Go Transit agreements with, um, FETC and the school district. Um, I apologize, I had to jump out and take a call from outside counsel while the TIF discussion was going on this morning. So I don't want to repeat that, but we do work very closely with, uh, community development on the TIFs and, um, development agreements. We worked on the Oshkosh Avenue agreements, Aviation Plaza, Merge and Marion Road. Uh, Merge actually had a fairly complicated real estate closing. We got that all, all the issues settled with that and closed this year. So. And then of course, um, Menominee Nation Arena. I can finally report, I think we see a, a light at the end of the tunnel. I don't think it's a train coming at us. Um, the amounts do have been paid and we received the COC for that property from the DNR this last week. So we are, uh, working very hard to finalize the closing documents. And, um, I'm hoping to close on that property in the next couple of weeks. And, um, then we'll be done for the moment, at least with them. So that, that's a project that's been, uh, a lot of work for a few years and, and we can finally kind of see the end of the, the tunnel with that one.
COC means cert, certificate of completion.
Yes, the environmental certificate of completion from the DNR. Thank you.
Okay.
With regard to, uh, another one that's taken up a lot of time is the WPDS permit for wastewater treatment. Um, we've been working really hard on that with public works. We, um, if council remembers, we agreed we are going to comply with the new TMDL limits. So we are working on settlement documents with the DNR in relation to our challenge to the permit. And, um, we're also working on some compliance projects in relation to how we're going to actually comply with that new permit limit. And, um, same thing there. I think we're, we're actually, um, starting to see the light at, let, at the end of that tunnel as well. That actually was the phone call I took earlier this morning. So we're actively working on that and, and hope to bring some stuff to you in the next, um, maybe month here or so. Um, we did complete our agreement with the town of Oshkosh in relation to water and sewer services for the Winnebago Mental Health Institute area. And we're working on a larger master agreement with all of the town sanitary districts. We were hoping to have that to you this fall, but, um, we're waiting for some financial information on that. So you might see, um, one-year renewals on that again for a couple of the districts this year. Uh, we prob, don't want to rush it through. Um, if we need to take the extra time, I would rather have the one-year renewals on. These are going to be long, long-term agreements. They come probably twenty years or better. And so we just want to get them right. And, um, we need that financial information to move forward. And so that's been a little bit of a, uh, taken a little longer than we wanted, but, um, but we're working diligently on that too. So those are kind of the highlights I wanted to hit. Obviously, there's, there's three, three of us and Kayla who keeps us all in line. And, um, we are busy with lots of things and there's, there's a lot more I could highlight. But, um, those, those are kind of the big projects we've been working on. And I, I wanted to give you an opportunity too, if you have any questions. Kayla is absolutely happy to answer those. All right.
Yeah, I don't think there's much else that, uh, yeah. Yeah, I don't think there's much else that, yeah, Lynn got into a lot of the details about active projects that she's working on. So budget-wise, it's, it's fairly static. So if that's, no other questions for the city attorney, we're still going to get to lunch a little early, but we don't have to be back till 1:00. But other than that, I think we're, we're ready to recess for lunch, Madam Mayor.
All right. So we'll reconvene here at 1:00. I personally am going to run some errands, but if I get back in time to grab some leftovers, I'll feel free to join me and munch away. But otherwise, we'll see everybody back at 1:00.
Very good. Thank you.